Thank you for having me.
Council, has got their interview guides?
Got mine.
Alright, get my copy case.
Can you get your copy?
Awesome. Oh, I got it. Five. Alright, loved one, thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
They're cold, too.
Nope, I got it, thanks.
What a treat.
I'm sorry? No, all of them, they're just different colors so you can tell them apart.
Good afternoon. Alright, council, let's get those mics green, we'll start at 4:00 PM. Alright, the clock has hit four, so let's please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the special meeting of City Council, and I'd like to pass it to Katie to please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Molnar?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Walden?
Wood?
Here.
Council, we have one absent member to excuse, and Councilman Walden, is there a motion to excuse Councilman Walden?
Motion to excuse, oh, sorry, to excuse bo- justice.
Second.
Second by McNabb, Katie, please call a roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Great, we have some department heads that aren't able to be here this evening as well, so we have all the parties needed for today. Really excited for our interviews, we have seven candidates that we're going to be interviewing for the future of Parks and Recreation Department, before we get to interviews, I'd like to open up for public comment. Is there any members of public that would like to address council this evening? If so, make sure you state your name and address at that mic. Alright, we have no public comment this evening, at the opening, we'll have another public comment after the interviews are completed. So with that, I'd like to kick off the Parks and Recreation Director interview process. Our first interview will be with Patricia. Patricia, we'll have you approach the podium there, just make sure that light is green.
It is.
Alright, great, and for background, I want to thank Councilman Molnar who had assembled a series of questions for consideration. I want to thank Katie for building out the broader interview score sheet, and she has copies for every council member here, so just ask that as we go through the interview process. We ask the questions, if everybody's open to it, we'll do it just like we've done our previous interviews, where we'll just start with Treasure Fonti, go down the chamber, and then reset, so that everybody has a chance to ask a question. Any questions, thoughts, concerns from council before we get started?
No, that works.
Alright, we have these interviews scheduled for thirty minutes per interview. So Patricia, before we get to our questions, maybe you could just state your name, your address.
Patricia Barkman, 299-08-BAYVIEW.
Well, we're very grateful for you putting your application forth. We have a series of questions for you, in total eleven questions that we'll cover with you. We'll go down the chambers, each party will ask you a question, give you a chance to respond, and then we'll go to the next party.
Okay.
Any questions for us before we get started?
Nope, not yet.
Treasure Fonti, you want to kick us off with the first?
Yeah, hello, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, what do you know about Gibraltar, and why do you think you'd be a good fit as our Parks and Recreation Director?
So, my family moved here in nineteen seventy-one, I was probably only like six months old. My mom had been here until she passed away in twenty-eleven. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to buy the house back then, we sold it to my nephew's friend. He was not the lowest bid, it was important to us to have somebody there that respected the city, appreciated the city and our house. I bought it back in twenty-eighteen and have been there since then. The first time that I walked in to pay my water bill, I didn't even have to say my name, she knew who I was. I think I would be good at it because I do have some government experience. It's not on my resume, but I did work for Monroe County for approximately ten years, and then I did work for the state as a consultant for about a year and a half. I do have a lot of the computer experience and manager experience, also an estimator, dealing with subcontractors doesn't directly relate, but dealing with vendors would be part of the park's job.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you so much, Councilman McNabb, you want to take us to question two?
Yeah, what is your philosophy and vision of a recreation for all ages in Gibraltar?
Well, I know when I was growing up here, we used to have the rec building just over here that had a hockey rink and ice rink and a rec building, that was definitely the go-to place. And since the canal froze, I believe everybody would like that rink again, we seen probably three of them. I'd like to do more, maybe senior stuff, maybe have bingo or get their input.
Very good.
Great, thank you, Councilman Molnar, question three?
Thank you, in your professional career, what did you find to be the most rewarding aspects of your current or previous jobs? Second part of that question, what do you think will be the most rewarding aspects of the position you are applying for?
The most rewarding for me was probably as an estimator, actually winning a project, following the project through, seeing it complete. With being the estimator, basically the entire company's employees' livelihoods was in my hands. So I felt, you know, very obligated to do a good job and make sure I covered everything.
I can relate, I've estimated many of roofing projects, and I agree, there's a lot of reward that went to it when you see it completed and in the black and not the red.
Right.
How about for the rec director position, what do you see being the most rewarding aspects of this job?
Seeing all the city come together and actually enjoying all the events, like the music in the park, the movie in the park. Parade is absolutely the biggest, Fourth of July Parade and the carnival is absolutely the biggest event in the city, for sure. Even when we didn't live here, we still came to it, definitely a highlight.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Love that, thank you, Katie, you want to take us to question four?
When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
I would say I'm a very resourceful person, when I was growing up, my mom was a single mom with six kids, so we made do with what we had, and would solicit funding, volunteers, and prioritize accordingly what is most important to the city residents.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Commissioner Blackburn, you want to take us to question five?
If selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to twelve months in this role?
Well, obviously, the marshmallow drop is coming, that would be my first thing to look out for. I know one of the other things that the residents would like is to be able to book the community centers online. My experience at the county was in computers, and I did develop, and, not develop, but managed EFT, electronic funds transfer, so I think that's something that I could definitely look into.
Great, great segue to my question for you, question number six, this position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
It's not directly related, but in my estimating role and estimating manager, I did have to solicit subcontractors, it was turnkey, it was actually for the big three automotive for conveyors, very high dollar value projects, would have to coordinate, make sure they met all the requirements with their bid and clarify them. Didn't always pick the lowest because obviously sometimes they don't cover everything.
Great, thank you, Councilwoman Wood, you want to take us to question seven?
Sure. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
I would have meetings and solicit comments, suggestions from the city residents, take a vote, prioritize them, and then get feedback once those events were done. Obviously, you can tell if people are enjoying it, if there's a big turnout or small turnout would be the measurables.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by mayor and city council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreational activities and events?
I do have experience as estimating manager, so I do know how to delegate and work with as a team and individuals. Obviously, I would try and play to each one's strengths and ask what tasks they would like to do and what they would be good at.
Great, Councilman Cox, you want to take us to question nine?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position? In addition to planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job and the occasional call-in during a rental, you will also be expected to attend city council meetings, Recreation Commission meetings, and occasional DDA meetings. Are you able to make these time commitments?
I am, so my previous job was salary, so it wasn't a straight forty hours, it was, you worked when you needed to work. I'm very used to that, very committed.
Are you still working?
No.
Are you retired now?
No.
Oh, okay.
Great, Treasure Fonti, we'll take it back to you for question number ten.
I have an easy one. Should you be offered this position, when will you be available to start?
Next week.
There you go, thank you.
And Councilman McNabb, you want to take us to question eleven?
Yep, I know you took the time to prepare for this interview, is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask?
No, I think it should be based on merit and experience, and if you think I was the best candidate.
Great, we, just council and department heads, important to note that we want to keep consistency with questions asked across candidates, so if there are additional clarifications or questions, we would just need to make sure that we replicate those accordingly across the seven candidates, so just be mindful of that. I appreciate your responses, and obviously, efficient, we're twelve minutes in, but I want to make sure that we keep that in mind. But council, any clarifications or further questions that you feel are important to ask?
May I add a question, and I'll keep it brief, but I'll make it consistent.
As long as we recognize that, I'll have to be applied to all candidates.
As we reimagine the Recreation Department, we're going to be dealing with, and we're currently dealing with it with rates and facility expenses and so on, we have two community centers. And the more I look at it, the more I get excited of filling those two centers, and if we don't, we're going to have to take a hard look at probably reducing to one. In your role as director, the door is open to create a lot of activity here, a lot of events. Do you see yourself in a role that could encourage events, event coordinators and that to come in and fill the spaces that we have here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, any further clarifications or questions? Patricia, thank you, is anything else that you'd like to share with council before we allow you to go about your afternoon or evening?
Nope, thank you very much, thank you for your time.
I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any feedback on the first interview that we should be thinking about for the second through seventh?
My only consideration would be, I do want to leave here at six fifteen, so I may miss the last two, it looks like.
Okay.
And if there was anybody who was here that we could jump up and keep going on, I would like to try and do that to be as part of much of it as I can.
Got it.
I was going to say, we have the last person here.
That, what do we, Katie, any, Mike, anything procedurally that would prevent us from bringing the other candidate up that's ready if we wanted to pursue that?
Necessarily, we can just make a motion to amend the...
Council, would we want to make a motion to amend, since we are only fourteen minutes in, and that would allow us to bring the last candidate up who's present currently?
If you're prepared and willing to, then, awesome, perfect, yeah, I'll make that motion to adjust our schedule accordingly.
Great, you know, before we make that motion, sorry, Patricia, if you don't mind coming back up for us, there's one question we always ask in every interview for the city positions, do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody in the chambers?
No, I mean, I do know some here, but I don't, they're not, I don't regularly go out with them or talk to them, or...
Awesome.
I know them, I know of them.
Awesome, thank you so much, alright, council, we'd be needing a motion to adjust the order of interviews to accommodate the next interviewee as item B. Katie, if you want to make that language maybe a recommendation, anything that you think would be appropriate?
This is, you're Kristen, okay, just make sure you have the right person, alright, and you making that motion?
Yes, please.
And is there a second, thank you.
Second by Valentine, any discussion on that motion? Katie, please call a roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, Kristen, we will welcome to the podium whenever you're ready.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Awesome, you want to state your name and address for us?
My name is Kristen Schonk, my address is nine four eight nine Raisin Street, MAB, Michigan.
Fantastic, well, thank you so much for making the time, and I'm glad that the ordering allowed you to come up as their second candidate, so with that, we're going to go ahead and get started, I'll follow the same order you just saw. So Treasure Fonti, you want to kick us off with question number one?
Good afternoon, thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Tell us a little bit about yourself, and what do you know about Gibraltar, and why do you think you'd be a good fit as our Parks and Rec Director?
Well, I have grown up in Gibraltar my whole life, I moved when I was twenty-two to MAB, but as far as the Parks and Recreation, I grew up going to all the events that Parks and Recreation would host. I spent countless hours at the community center, dance, T-ball, Girl Scouts, pretty much anything that was going on there, I was there as a child, so I have a lot of formative memories in the community center and with the Parks and Recreation Department as a whole, growing up. And then, I lived here until I was twenty-two, so I attended things like the parade and all of those events that were held, so, I'm sorry. So I am very familiar with Gibraltar, and I grew up here, my family still lives here, my parents and extended family as well.
Thank you.
Fantastic, Councilman McNabb, question two?
What is your philosophy and vision of recreation for all ages in Gibraltar?
I believe that we need to extend past the just small kids into teenagers, adults, seniors, and create more programs for everyone to enjoy as a whole, not just the small kids. But I would like to try and get the Parks and Recreation Department back involved in things such as T-ball, and I know the mini marauders currently do that, but I think that we could integrate ourselves back into that. We could also do other sports-related programs that are very low startup cost, but if they get a good turnout, they would give good return, I believe, such as soccer with small like pop-up nets. I have, in my past experience, I am on a committee in the town that I live in now, and we have done the soccer program, and it has had good turnouts and sign-up, and it's very low startup cost with just nets and balls, basically, and just, you have the space already by the community center, you just paint the lines a couple times, and it's very low maintenance, but it's a good turnout, and people seem to enjoy it for smaller kids. For seniors, I believe that we could potentially, I know that there was a fifty-and-up club that was in, used the community center and utilized that, I believe that if it's dwindled, but we could bring it back and start that again. I believe there's events that we could do geared more towards teens and those type of age kids. I do, I could go on for a long time, but I just think that there's more that we could do for all ages, not just the smaller kids, because I do realize that a lot of the events that are geared towards the kids, such as the marshmallow drop, the Christmas Santa and stuff like that, but I think that we could have a broader range of events that are available to everyone.
Thank you.
Fantastic, Councilman Molnar, question three?
Thank you, in your profession or career, this is a two-part question, so in your professional career, what did you find the most rewarding aspects of your current or previous jobs? And then the second part of it being, if you were to get this role, what would you find to be the most rewarding aspects of this one?
Well, I could answer in one part by saying, in my previous slash current role as athletic director of a school that I work at, I have created programs and events for the kids at the school, and I find it very rewarding when you get a good turnout, and people seem to enjoy that and utilize the events and programs that you put together. I find that very rewarding, and I think that the job is worthwhile because of that. And that's what I would get out of the Recreation Director position in Gibraltar, I believe, as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you, Clerk Tomasek, question four?
Hi. When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
I do have a lot of experience, I work at a small private school, so funds are extremely limited, we make do with what we have, and volunteers are hard to come by, not a lot of people are wanting to volunteer, but I make efficient use of the ones I have, use their abilities, and try and fully utilize everything I have available to me with their skills, and try and maximize efficiency based on that. And as far as funds go, I'm very much used to doing a lot with a little, because at a small private school of sixty students, there's not a lot of funding as far as excess money for things as athletics and after-school programs and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Commissioner Blackburn?
If selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to twelve months in the role?
Well, I would, priority would be the programs and events that are already in place, and try and make sure those go off and continue without a hitch. And then I would like to implement some low to no-cost events that would possibly bring in money, like such as during the Fourth of July, I had considered maybe an adult kickball tournament. We have done that in the past in the town that I live in, and it's gotten good turnout, and it's low to no startup cost, and people would pay, you know, to register their teams, and it would just kind of be something to draw people into the festival, and even more, and they could form their teams, and that's just one of the ideas. But just low-cost startup things for the six to twelve months, but prioritizing the projects and events that are already in place for the rec department.
Awesome, I'll take you to the next question, this is question number six, this position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
Well, I currently hold the position of treasurer in the village that I live in, so I am very comfortable with documenting payments, and I work a lot with Google Sheets and Excel as far as documenting payments. As far as bookings go, not necessarily that, but I do help with the online registrations, which would be similar in that I have to keep track of that, and I believe that I could efficiently do bookings online. I'm proficient with computers, and I think that that would be something that I could easily manage.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wood, you want to take us to question seven?
Yes. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
I would like to put out feelers into the community, I know that there have been surveys put out online in the past that I have seen. I would like to do some in-person outreach to, maybe within the schools, for example, at parent-teacher conferences, just be right there, people would be more apt to just quickly fill out a survey. I know people tend to look past online surveys or things that they would get in the mail, and if you're right there in front of them, I believe that they would be more apt to fill it out, and we would get a good sense, because I feel that the schools and the parents of the kids in the schools are our largest base of people who utilize things at the rec center, so I believe that that would be good. And then, holding community meetings if they, if we found a need to do that. But I just feel that if you're right there where they already are, it's easier to get them to, you know, give you feedback, because people don't necessarily come to meetings, they're busy, but if you're where they already are, you could get a good amount of feedback that way.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by mayor and city council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreational activities and events?
I would very much utilize the commission, and I believe that everyone has a specific set of skills that they're, and everyone's is different, so I think that a large pool or a larger pool of people with all different types of skills would be extremely useful to utilize in that setting. I am looking forward to it, being adults, in my previous job, I was managing high school and college-age, mostly boys, which are, you know, you can't leave them unsupervised for long, so I believe that a well-rounded group of adults would be good to work with and bounce ideas off of, and I'm very open to suggestions and ideas from all, I'm not very rigid in what I think would be good. I don't believe that I know everything, and I think that a commission is very necessary for the director to utilize.
Thank you so much, Councilman Cox?
Good afternoon, thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Mine's a two-part question, too, what is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for the position? In addition to planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job and the occasional call-in during a rental, you will also be expected to attend city council meetings, Recreation Commission meetings, and occasional DDA meetings. Are you able to make these time commitments?
I do believe that I am able to make these time commitments. My current job as, I'm the PE teacher at the school that I work at, and it's currently... only three hours um, a week, with it, with it being such a small school, I'm able to complete that um, in three hours. So that is currently the only position I have, um, other than um, the treasurer, which is a volunteer-based thing that happens once a month, as far as those meetings go, or less than maybe like once a quarter. Um, it's very low commitment and if it interfered with this job, I would effectively step down from that treasurer position, um, and commit fully to um, the Recreation Director position.
Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer Fonti, you want to take us to question number ten?
Yeah, this is an easy one. Uh, should you be offered the position, when are you available to start?
Um, I would be available to start immediately, but keeping in mind that I am under contract um, with the school until the end of the school year, um, Mondays from nine to noon. So I don't know if that would be um, any type of, but just being fully transparent with that, I am committed to that and under contract with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Uh, Councilwoman McNabb, you want to take us to question eleven and then Treasurer Fonti, we'll go back to you to make sure you articulate the same question to this candidate as well.
Yeah. I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask you?
Um, no, I don't believe so. Um, I was wondering if you would be concerned about the fact that I don't live in Gibraltar, um, but I think that I would be able to do the job regardless of the fact that I do not live in Gibraltar. So I'm glad that that wasn't a main concern.
How long did it take for you to get here today?
It takes me a half hour.
Okay.
I'm here very regularly though, because my parents live here, so I'm here at least twice a week as of now, just for no reason at all, except to visit, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, Treasurer Fonti, just make sure you articulate the same question to this candidate, please.
Help me out if I forget.
I took some notes.
Yeah, good. Uh, as we reimagine the Recreation Department with this new open position, we're also looking at the rates of rental and the cost to operate both of our buildings. You know, we have two buildings here.
Yes.
And uh, you can look at it two different ways. One, if you can't fill one, you, you get rid of the other.
Right.
Or what I like to see is if we could fill them both. Do you see that in yourself to be able to uh, look at the financial aspects of both buildings and bring enough coordination together with event planners and that to fill both buildings?
Um, I believe I could do that. Um, I believe that advertising to um, places um, that already have programs like that. So I know that other cities have a lot of programs. We can kind of take a look at what they have and then try and find um, people or maybe some of the same people who are looking to expand um, into other communities um, for that. And then also, I have created a lot of programs as well, um, in my position as the Athletic Director and PE Teacher After School Programs. So I'm familiar with um, creating programs for kids and stuff like that. So I think that I would be able to um, at least attempt to try and fill both and if we can't, then I think that um, one community center um, is probably your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being flexible on your order and the candidate uh, structure. Any final questions for us or any comments you'd like to close with?
No, I just thank you for having me and I wish you well and finding the best candidate that fits your um, city's needs.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
All right, well, we are at four thirty-one, now just thirty-two, so I'd like to welcome up Kennedy. Uh, and Kennedy, you can state your name and address and then we'll go ahead and get started.
Absolutely. Thank you, everybody, for your time. My name's Kennedy Perkupchik. I currently reside at one-three-two-three-zero Delverne, um, in Gibraltar. So thank you for everyone for being here today.
Well, good afternoon and uh, I think you just witnessed some of the flow of how this is operating, but we have uh, twelve questions. Uh, we're asking the same questions every candidate and uh, actually, on that note, I'm so sorry, um, I forgot to ask one question of you. Uh, do you mind just coming back up, just for consistency? I'm so sorry, Kennedy. Uh, we ask of every candidate that's interviewing for a city position. Do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody up in front of you?
No, I do not.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kennedy, I am so sorry about that. I want to make sure we're consistent across candidates. So as you saw the flow, uh, we have twelve questions for you, now thirteen with that one, and we'll go around the chambers. Treasurer Fonti will kick us off with question number one and then we will uh, give you a chance at the end to ask any clarifying questions or comments.
Okay.
Treasurer Fonti?
Thank you for coming in. Tell us a little bit about yourself. What do you know about Gibraltar and why do you think you'd be a good fit as the Recreation Director?
Absolutely. So I am twenty-six years old. I've resided in Gibraltar for my entire life, um, been involved in a lot of different community um, events and activities, um, different commissions and different programs. I've worked within the city as well in a few different roles. Um, I think that I would be good at the position um, for a few different reasons, but one of the main things is just being involved as myself as a kid. Being it within those events and seeing the impact that it makes on the community, I think I have a lot to bring to the table and the impact that I was able to um, enjoy myself. I'd like to see the next generation enjoy that as well. There is a ton of events that I think the Recreation Commission could bring to the city. There's, um, I have a few ideas, but sake, time sake, I'll keep those to myself. For now, I think some future questions may include some of those things. Did that cover, I think you had like three questions and the one question, did that cover everything?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if not, we'll pick it up along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McNabb, take us to question number two?
Yeah. What is your philosophy, your, your philosophy and vision for recreation for all ages?
I think that the Recreation Commission could do a lot for all ages. There are s, kit, programs for young kids and adults that we could have and anything in between, um, with, along with utilizing both buildings to do so. I know that was mentioned before. I think the philosophy is that the city has a lot of resources and opportunities to bring new events and take current events and build on top of them um, throughout the entire year. Um, I know sometimes the winters are slower around here, but there are definitely a lot more that we could bring.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilman Mulner?
Thank you. Kennedy, in your professional career, what, and this is a two-part question, uh, what did you find the most rewarding aspects of uh, your current or previous jobs? And what do you think will be the most rewarding aspect of this position you're applying for?
I don't have a super in-depth professional career, only being twenty-six, but I think that um, my last full-time employer, when we um, brought in a new program for our um, for the systems that we used, I had to take all the employees and piece by piece, take two of them out of our current program, train them in our new program and move them over to that new program, with still having the, all the other employees in our old one, and slowly merge them into it. Um, into like two by two, had a group of twenty people. And I think the most rewarding of that was taking the old system and letting it go, starting the new system, and then once we got into the new system to get everyone onto the same page. Um, I know some of the things that we do um, here at Gibraltar, the Recreation Commission, could use a technological update. Um, so I think having background in auto, operating systems and moving from old to new, that I could think I could bring that to the table. There's, um, and then with, what was the second part of your question? I'm sorry.
Uh, what would you find most rewarding about this, this uh, position?
The position in general?
The, yeah, right. Yep, the Recreation Director position. I think you started answering it by technological updates.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think I could um, provide some technological updates to different things, like the bookings, um, payments, uh, planning and overall um, using, utilizing the website to give people access to more information as well, um, as far as pricing, contracts, things like that, making the process a little easier and not getting rid of the paper options, but having things electronically um, available from any location, I think is really important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Tomasek?
Right. When you are faced with limited resources, financial, staff and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
I think starting with what you have is really important and then building from that. So no need to recreate the wheel. If we have something that we can take and turn it into something better, I think that that's really important because of the aspects um, of utilizing the resources that you have on hand. Um, that could be used in many different ways, a financial, as far as a lot of the activities that we do in the city don't bring in a ton of money. It doesn't mean we have to spend a ton of money to put them on. We have a lot of um, material and every, things like that in the community center in the city, uh, that we could use for events that we could have.
Thank you.
Love it. City Commissioner Blackburn?
If selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to twelve months in the role?
I think the first six months would to be, to get the Recreation Commission kicked off, um, get some volunteers, get some events started. Um, Easter's coming up and we tend to do the Marshmallow Drop and Easter Kids Event, so that would be definitely a top priority. Seeing that it is middle of February already, um, Fourth of July would crazily be included in that six months, so that would be a huge um, thing that would be upcoming very, very shortly, actually. I read online that it was thirty-one days till spring, so I only have to enjoy this white stuff for so much longer. The summer is quickly approaching and that's a huge event um, for the city. I know there's a lot of things that are already set um, for that. Our last Recreation Director definitely left us in good standing, um, preparing for the Fourth of July. Now, there's a lot of volunteers and help that comes along with that as well. I've been involved um, with a few different organizations in the city, but even like the parade, they're already starting to talk about that, all the planners, so that's something that would be in the next six months. Um, twelve months, I would say, have the Recreation Commission fully built out, or at least very close to. And then also securing the, my goals that I would have in the position, if I were to receive the position, I would have goals set for myself and I would look to be achieving them by twelve months. One of those being the electronic or technological advances, things like that. I'd want to get those in as soon as possible, but in twelve months, hope to have them kicked off and effectively being used within the city.
Thank you. Uh, question number six. This position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
I explain myself as a very organized person. I take a lot of notes, um, and I create a lot of different graphics in my current role that I have, um, as far as like flow charts and things like that, so I think that could be helpful. That was in my last full-time position as well. I was in charge of a lot of things like that. But one of my first professional positions um, in my life, when I worked at the YMCA in Southgate, I was in charge of swim lessons and private swim lessons, group swim lessons, um, and I was in charge of getting all of those programs booked, getting people um, paid up and getting everyone registered for that and then also printing out rosters and utilizing usually seven-week sessions, um, getting them pushed through the system and I did that for about five years. So the electronic or um, online booking was definitely a part of my skillset there.
Awesome. Thanks, Kennedy. Councilwoman Wood? Question number seven?
Okay. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
I think starting with what we have, um, for the time being, would be a great, um, a great base, but I think growing on each of the events that um, we have now is important and then creating new events, I think, is really important. We'd want to definitely gauge community engagement and see what people want or what people need. Um, also, the ages of the community are really important. I don't think we have a lot of activities for like young, very young kids, like under five or like teenaged kids. I think that's important because those kids need something to do too. Um, not that we never have had things like that, but I think all ages definitely need to have something to do. I think a lot of times, my teenage years, we were, we were lost, um, those couple of years. There's a lot of things for over eighteen or over twenty-one and there's a lot like under twelve. So that middle age is really important to keep kids busy. They tend to cause trouble around that age, so you got to keep them busy. As far as for all ages, I think it's really important to get them all involved. Can you ask the second part of your question?
Um, no, and how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
Oh, absolutely. So asking parents, asking kids, um, how they felt or what they felt could be different after events. You could put out surveys and get parental feedback from any sort, uh, but also asking the kids what they want, I think is fun. I don't know, another community engagement event we did before, we had surveys for kids and they tried to tell, or they had to tell us what they wanted and they got to be in the running for like a Dairy Queen gift card. I thought that was fun, because it was feedback from them, not just their parents. So, so they came up with some off-the-wall things. Uh, they wanted us, there was one kid, he answered, he wanted to build a sky zone, a sky zone or like a trampoline jump park, I don't think would be um, very effective in the city of Gibraltar, but sometimes they come up with some off-the-wall things. But definitely getting feedback from kids um, is important and the parents, they tend to have good feedback as well. Um, and then also the turnout of each event is really important. Sometimes you have to take other factors into consideration, weather, um, location, timing, so maybe trying events more than once, if they're not successful and maybe putting a spin on it could help as well, just because something didn't work for one time, doesn't mean it's not going to work the next, put a spin on it.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Councilwoman Valentine?
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by mayor and city council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities and events?
I was involved in the Recreation Commission as volunteer for the last couple of years and I think it's important to take each person and assign them duties, be able to delegate um, away to each person. There's eleven people and that could be people of, eleven totally different people. No one could have the same skills, um, or everyone could have the same skill. So in creating a commission, I would plan on honing in on everyone's skills prior to and trying to create a very diverse commission, um, in order to, I mean, say that I'm crafty and you're technologically inclined and you're mechanically inclined and we could all come up together and make a good event or have a good commission um, with that. And volunteers, you also have to be very conscientious of the commitment that they can have, so you can't expect all eleven people to be there every time. So you need to make sure that you plan out with your commission, your events as well. Uh, if it's a, maybe a weekend, a lot of people travel or things like that, it, you just need to plan ahead of time and hopefully you can get verbal commitment. Um, and then also, just because they're not on the commission, doesn't mean that people can't volunteer to help. So putting out um, feelers for extra volunteers for certain events is never a crime. So definitely utilizing the community in multiple ways.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Cox?
Two-part question. Hi, Kennedy. What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position is part one? In addition to planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job and the occasional call-in during a rental, you will also be expected to attend city council meetings, Recreation Commissions, Commission meetings and an occasional DDA meeting. Are you able to make these time commitments?
Yes, I am able to make the time commitments. Um, as far as the expectations for the time commitment, um, from the past Recreation Director um, role, I understand that it was twenty hours a week, um, there's office hours, different meetings and things like that. Was there any, am I allowed to ask questions, Garrett, Katie?
Absolutely.
Was there any like change or like plan to change the role, um, from the twenty hours or?
Do you want to speak to that?
I don't want to speak on the group's behalf, but um, relative to what kind of programming we're going to talk about and, and who acquires the position and obviously other things that go along with it, like the rentals of the community center, I think those are all driving factors on where the position might take us.
Okay.
At this point, I don't think there's a clear.
Yeah, no, and I love the, I love the strategic kind of need-based assessment of it and I know we have some existing language that we have to abide by. It is a part-time, there is an hourly, but uh, same as Commissioner Blackburn, do you want to comment on that?
Sorry. Right now, per ordinance, the position is part-time, so it's up to, it'll be twenty-eight hours a week.
Okay.
As of right now. If that ordinance ever changes in, in the future, it could turn into a part-time position or a full-time position, but right now it's a part-time position.
I think Councilman Cox is spot on, because we've had some really good discussions with council and obviously leveraging Parks and Recreation Director, former Parks Recreation Director and what we are able to understand about the department and the activities, the commitments, a lot of things that Treasurer Fonti was alluding to around the, the centers and how we think about the revenue, kind of cost considerations, so council will have the ability, if they so chose, to pursue revisions in the ordinance structure, but right now, that's the structure that might get highlighted.
Okay. So my current expectation would be the current So my current expectation would be the current expectation for the role, for the role and for the former Recreation Director. I can be readily available at any time. All the jobs that I have right now are flexible as far as times. So I build out my schedule month to month. And any commitments that I would have would be worked around this position. This would be my priority. And then also with time, if that changed, I would also be able to modify how many positions I hold. I have multiple jobs right now. But if I took on a new role, it would be easy for me to have another one fall off or vice versa. So I would be able to fully commit to the role and all of its expectations.
Thank you.
Treasurer Fonti, we'll go back to you for question number ten.
That's an easy one. Should you be offered this position, when will you be available to start?
Immediately.
Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman McNabb, and then we'll go back to Treasurer Fonti to articulate question number twelve.
Okay, yeah, you know, you took the time to prepare for those interviews. Is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask you?
I don't believe so.
Anything?
No.
It's all pretty much there.
All right. Treasurer Fonti, back to you for question number twelve, and then I'll take us to the final question.
As we reimagine the Recreation Department right now because of the open position, and as you are aware, we have two facilities here. We're currently looking at the rate structure and the cost to revenue between the two buildings. One side would say that all we need is one, the other side might say that we should have two. But having two would mean that we have to fill them and we have to make sure that we have enough capacity there. So in your role, as you expand your role or look at a forward-thinking role, do you see yourself being able to look at that objectively and either fill or make a decision or assist us in a decision to either get rid of one or, or the other?
Yes, absolutely. I think that both buildings can be utilized a lot more. I was here at the meeting when you guys were discussing the original special meeting about the Recreation Department. And I think that both could be fully utilized, but in the situation that we're currently in, I do believe that it would be a possibility, maybe for the season or maybe for this year, to close one down and just utilize the other. And then among the year or whatever period, time period we're putting on it, maybe next year or next season, opening up the other building to be prepared. But at the current time, I do understand how that could be a possibility. But I think that there's a lot of programs and a lot of things that the city could use that building for. Simple, simple things or even like rentals, weekly things, programs. A big idea that I've had is like a reading program for small kids. The Cook Community Center would be a perfect environment for that. A smaller area, but enough for kids to roam and things like that. A few other ideas would be like a co-op program, so a lot of like homeschools or hybrid schools and things like that. We could utilize that Cook Community Center, or I mean even the bigger one as well. But as far as building size, I think that the, both community centers could be utilized a ton more and to keep them open year-round, I think it might be prevalent to the community.
Thank you very much.
Love it. Last question, I know you've served this community, but we ask the question to every candidate, which is, do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody sitting in front of you?
Personal, no, besides the fact of knowing most of the people that have lived in the city their entire lives as well. Professional, though, I am a current city employee. So I would say that I've worked with most of the people that sit at this podium or sit at this, in this room, but that's all.
Thank you. Any final questions you have for us? Well, thank you for taking the time. Council, any final questions for Kennedy? Great. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Appreciate it. Councilor three, four candidates, we have our fourth candidate. Do we want to take like a five-minute bio slash break since we're ahead of schedule? I know we're trying to track towards getting everybody ahead of time for all council, but maybe a motion for a five-minute break and then we can get back since we're halfway through.
Works for me. I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion by Molnar, second by McNabb. Katie, please call roll.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Great. Council will be back in your seats at four fifty-seven and we will get ready for our fourth interview.
That works. Don't fall asleep. From now on, I'm going to wake you up. Huh? Oh, do I? I got used to doing that for a reason.
I love that. Thank you. So whenever they give me direction on how to handle that, I'll do it.
How's it going over there?
Gotcha.
Yes. Yes. You think you got the aim over there or what?
No, it's colder here. We've never fixed that thermostat. Yeah, but we've never fixed that thermostat. We talked about it for years. But you're right. Yeah, it's either too hot or too cold. They're treating us like the Walt Disney.
Screen again. Council will be looking for a motion to return from our five-minute recess.
Motion to return.
To return.
Second.
Second by McNabb. Katie, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
All right, well, we are back in our interviews. We've had three interviews. We are now welcoming our fourth candidate, Dennis, to the podium. Dennis, just make sure that light is still green and please state your name and address.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Dennis Bosmer, two nine seven seven five Point Drive here in Gibraltar. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much for being here. I don't know if you saw the flow in the last, but we'll have a total of thirteen questions for you. We're just going to go around the chambers. Each one of us will ask you a question. We're asking all the questions, the same questions for all candidates. But thank you for applying for this position. And Treasurer Fonti will kick it off with question number one.
Good afternoon and thank you for coming in.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. What do you know about Gibraltar and why do you think you're a good fit as the Recreation Director?
I was just thinking back, it's probably, I'll be fifty-four, might be fifty-five this year. Forty-seven years in Gibraltar.
I'll trade you.
Yeah, so Gilthelbert was my Cub Scout leader, master. You know, so Cub Scouts, early memories of the community center. My dad creating creative costumes for Halloween and winning a couple of contests. The J.C.'s were popular back in Gibraltar at that time. They probably, I don't remember, but I remember the J.C.'s were real popular. My dream was to live on the water and that dream came to fruition nearly seven years ago. So I got a pontoon, so I enjoy the waterways. I appreciate the Waterways Commission more now than ever. I always appreciate people giving back to the community, but then getting in and out of the canal is, they're, you know, preeminent in that happening. And all the commissions we have in town are important. And being on council, having that opportunity, that really that honor of serving the community for four years and so forth, had an opportunity to be on our fire department for, I don't know, was it five to seven years? Like to have been more active as I was, very, very busy at the time, so as I could give, I could give, you know. I think that's how most people are when it's volunteer force like that. My dad was a reservist for the City Gibraltar Police Department. After the race riots and that in Detroit in the late sixties, you had to have an identification to get into the community itself. And he had four young children before me at the home at the time, rest of my siblings. And so Dad served the community. He worked at the school district. I think I've talked at the podium before, I used to go on police calls with, there may be potential break-in. My dad would take me from time to time, you know, and the police were okay with that. And I'd come in with them and I felt very empowering as a young man and seeing my dad in that position, giving back to the community. So, you know, Rotary here in Gibraltar for a season, the Fraternal Beagles. So I believe in community, I believe in community action. I believe that it takes a community to make anything happen, especially when it comes to Parks and Recreation. That's a little bit about myself. I was in Recreation, I was a football player for Carlson-Rodgers, you know, I graduated in eighty-eight. I loved that sport, loved that team. And, you know, judo for, I don't know, twelve or fifteen years, pretty well with that sport too. So gave me a lot of discipline, a lot of respect for people, I think. Because you know what, in the mat in judo, you know what you can do. And you didn't have to, you know, you know what, you know, at the end of the day with that sport. So you can defend yourself, it's more defense than it is aggressive. So I think that's probably a good nutshell about me. Law enforcement for fifteen years and that was with Customs and TSA before that. About eighteen years of federal service and so I've, I've got a little more free time on my hands and I do kind of what I want to do now in my life and it's just kind of a blessing, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McNabb?
What is your philosophy, what is your philosophy and vision on recreation for all ages in Gib?
It's pretty broad. We had a robust little league. I know they got the Little Marauders. I taught T-ball. So I participated in the Marauders part of that and the, and the school district part. I think we could partner with the school district again. I'd love to have us have, we won't have Pizza Bobs again, but we'll have Flat Rock Bagging still around. The Morrison Company is still around, you know, Happless Teams is the teams that sponsored the teams back then. I got the Molnar Roofing that might sponsor a baseball team. So I'd love to have a robust sports and activities for the kids to do. When I was a kid, I don't know how practical it would be now because I'm getting older. And, but I think kids still like rudimentary things like just something to do that keeps them maybe out of a little mischief. Maybe jumping off the bridge, they go over there and play foosball, pool, billiards, ping pong. I know those games are a little dated, but I think they're still fun if you get them interested in that, in that. Have a teen center, I used to have a teen center when I was a kid here in Gibraltar. So I know video games are a lot more important and popular. Then you probably have to vet that with the city and the, what we want the kids to be playing and on city time and so forth. But, and then you got the generation, my generation, I like to play cornhole, I like playing horseshoes. You know, I, I always think about the bigger picture of things, the liability and so forth like that. So we'd have to sit down with legal and make sure everything's safe and in a good environment. But I love to have horseshoes and play those kind of games at the, at the recreation. We have a huge property there between the two properties, so. That's a little vision, I could probably go on, I don't know how much you want to hear from me. But I think it should be community-driven. I would hope that we'd have a robust five or maybe eleven. That's probably stretching it, I would think, being realistic. But if you can get eleven people, that'd be fantastic, you know. More the merrier. I know the Sunseekers do a lot with the city community parades and so forth and organize that for the community half for a long time. So we continue on with what's the groundwork, the foundation that's been laid by Mr. Talbert and then Ms. Gores and then going to the future. I'd like to hear more from the community and what they really want. I think we're starting to do that already. We had a five-year plan when I was on council and that went from like fourteen to nineteen, I think it was, so. Okay.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Molnar?
Thanks, Dennis. This is a two-part question. In your professional career, what were the most rewarding aspects of your, of your previous jobs? And then also, what do you think the most rewarding aspect of this position would be?
I mean, there's, I've got quite a few jobs I've had in my life. So probably a pull from that is, in that community aspect, like with, even with Customs, you know, getting some illegal drugs off the street or, you know, maybe a high, a higher-profile arrest that came my way. Ensuring safety and public safety was important. When I did the fire department training, that was important. I did some ambulatory runs and stuff like that. I think I had got blasted on a house, in a fire, a boat fire, and then we had a house fire right down the street here. And just giving back to community and providing a safe environment has always been paramount for me. I'll talk to my friends and they're like, you said something about that? I'm like, it's not my kid on the roof jumping from roof to roof, but it made my heart break. When that kid slips off the roof and breaks his neck, I, I can't have that in my conscience, I gotta say something. So I think having a safe environment for our kids to come and play and adults and youth and older folks and the over fifty club we used to have in Gibraltar, I'd like to have those things return. But it takes community and it takes everyone wanting to have that happen. So the most rewarding thing has been, maybe of all things, the Quanis, or not the Quanis, but the Fraternal Beagles, they put baskets together for those who are having a little bit troubles. And some are even their own members, you know, and they put a turkey, turkey in there, stuffing, you know, practical things. Muffins, a gallon of milk, a gallon of orange juice. So perishable items and non-perishables. And just seeing somebody get fed means a lot to me personally. So I'm just, I'll be myself here at this podium, this is who I am, you're going to see what you get. And this job can be that, in that same room, it could be, I think, will be very rewarding. Seeing the smiles on people's faces if we bring the ice sculpture thing. Or I participated in many of the parades, whether I was running for office or with other entities and throwing the ice, ice pops I like to get, throw them out into the crowd and stuff and seeing the kids light up. And it's, it's very fun, very rewarding. So if I can just add, I'd like to see maybe, when I was a kid too, again, Parsons used to have like craft days and stuff like that. And I think we could maybe implement something like that here in the summer months for the kids to do. Maybe the younger kids would like enjoy that more, like finger painting and clay things and, you know, so.
Thank you so much. Clerk Tomasic?
When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate those resources effectively?
Good question. I've been a supervisor before. I've worked for corporate America, I've worked for the federal government and I've worked for nonprofits. So currently I work for a nonprofit and sometimes the monies aren't there. We did a chili cook-off that was hosted at the Cook Community Center. And we're talking about maybe partnering with, on that level, who I am outside this interview, maybe partnering with the police department and the fire department. And I just realized they're nonprofits too. They got the Goodfellows and they got the Firefighters Association. So, but yeah, if we bring in five or six grand, which we did, maybe overhead and stuff like that. And then that augments the, so maybe the, maybe fundraising. I don't know how you can co-mingle funds with the government, city government, but maybe there's a fundraising opportunity for Parks and Recreation to have outside monies. I was a treasurer for a minute and I sat on the board for the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance and we raised money yearly to pay for the nonprofit director's wage and for ancillary monies that the Fish and Wildlife Service didn't have from a federal budget standpoint. So we raised monies to, for snosh, snowshoes, recreation opportunities at the, of the International Wildlife Refuge here in Gibraltar. So kids want to go fishing, there's a pole for them to go fishing with, which the government maybe couldn't buy, but the nonprofit could help solicit and make some fund arrangements. So those are some of the practical applications I've had in my own life.
Thank you.
City Administrator Blackburn?
If, if selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to 12 months in the role?
First and foremost, you need to get your feet under you, you know. You, you might see from the outside, oh, I could do that, like a lot of jobs, right? Maybe sitting in a city administrative position or be the mayor of Gibraltar or be a mayor pro tem and then actually sit in that seat. Or until you do it, you don't know for sure a hundred percent. So I don't wanna be humble with that and know that the feet are underneath me. My understanding is Ms. Gores would shadow and help shadow and she's, she's still there as a lifeline. That'd be great to have her give you some, some walking time there. And then almost immediately, I'd like to get that commission up to a higher standard. Maybe do some flyers and some communications and some Facebook things and some social media. And really blast that need. I know you guys are doing it from the seat, elected seat you have, but as a Recreation Director, I'd like to have the commission full or close to it. And have a diversity of age and people and just, you know, people that wanna help out. And, and then, I mean, maybe there's, you know, for numbering them, cause I didn't think about these ahead of time, but you would wanna set up objectives of what you wanna see, you know, listen to you, the electeds and listen to the community. Maybe have some special meetings at the community center even, if we can do that. And hear from them directly of what they really wanna, you know, what they wanna see and do in practical. I, you know, like, here's an example, like a game night for families. They do it with the Eagles. You play twenty minutes of life, you know, play Connect Four and the other family's playing whatever game. And then in twenty minutes, you, you switch up and switch partners. So people get, in the community get to know each other and you're co-mingling and you're getting, you know, you got popcorn and peanuts. People bring those snacks they want to. Or you can have a vendor come in and sell hot dogs and whatever you wanna do. But we could have some game nights and some family nights too, so. Some other ideas, so.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Question number six. This position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
In that particular aspect, I don't have practical experience doing that part of it. I've organized community events for my tribe at the nonprofit I'm working for with Gibraltar, with Trenton, with Girl's Seal, with Flat Rock and with Wyandotte. And I contacted our Parks and Recreation Director, explained the nonprofit status we had. Is there any special opportunities that are written into your policies? Yes, there is, no, there's not. What are the fees, if they're waived or if they had to be paid? So I've organized that from that aspect and implemented volunteers come in and man the booths that we had. I think I ran into Mr. Valentine and a few other people at some of the events that we had out in Girl's Seal and Trenton in particular. So, and then was a supervisor at the Monsanto plant, the old plant. And we had like, back then they had pagers, they had keys that were assigned. So I had a spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet and I itemized who had what keys and who had. Well, the masters were kept with me, lock and key, and then we'd, we'd cut keys if they needed to be cut. And the pages were turned in and turned, you know, the numbers were assigned. And so allocating and organizing, I've done those things in my life, but not for the recreation particular job. But I think it would be a trainable person that could pick up pretty easily on that end.
Thank you so much. Councilman Wood, question number seven?
Okay, Dennis. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
Yeah, again, I think I would have maybe some formal and then some informal, you know, kinda like the mayor would have a coffee hour and just have the partner recreation directors there to come in and talk to on a one-on-one basis. Where they feel more comfortable, they can open up and really speak their mind. And public speaking is stressful, interviewing is stressful and coming in and being in a group sometimes stressful for some people. So try to meet everybody, at best you can, meet everybody on their level. Do the, the corporate thing, do the city council thing, do the individual one-on-ones. I like to believe, I like to believe myself as a person that likes to bring people together and not divide. So I'd like to bring the community together and hear from them. Everybody here, I think, lives in, works in Gibraltar, maybe one or two don't, but we're all community members. And I'd like to actually think that I could, you know, participate in that and have some fun too at some point, you know. But it'd be a lot of job-related things, but make it fun, make it light. And really, like I said, and then if you, once you practically put an application in place, you try the event out and then do a survey afterwards or talk to people one-on-one again. Maybe, you know, sometimes a formal survey people love, sometimes people don't like to do that, they just wanna talk to you. And then write notes down, be a note taker, write things down, document it. Sift through the data and find out what the best course of action would be going forward. Did it work, did it not work? Did it go out of our budget, did it, you know, fix, you know, stay within budget? And look at those numbers and ideas and, well, again, cause everyone likes a second annual and a third annual or they wouldn't be the third and fourth annual, you know. Like our parade is fun, people love the December parade for Christmas and stuff like that, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Valentine, you wanna take us to question eight?
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by mayor and city council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities at events?
Once you get your numbers, if they hopefully stay fluid, you know, I try to find out who has more time than others. Some like, might just come and go once or twice here and there. The other ones are a lot more time on their hands maybe. Get to know them, build rapport and a relationship. Keep it professional, but be, keep it fun too, cause Parks and Recreation is fun, you know. Made a great comical series about it, so. It's a lot of fun, it's, it's a serious thing to do for the community. So, I mean, people blowing off steam and stuff like that, it's, it's paramount, especially in this day and age. It's more, we get more and more stressed out. I think people need a, a, a good outlet that's safe and, and fun for all. It's kind of a daunting task when you think about it, you're trying to please everybody and it's almost impossible to do that. But you, you do your best to please everybody and some will fall through the cracks, but you'll hopefully build a team and that team building. And, you know, you can get creative with your meetings, you can, you wanna bring popcorn to the next meeting, I'm gonna bring peanuts, you know. Just little things like that might just spice things up enough to make people like, when they are sitting in on a, in a meeting, it's still kinda fun, you know. You have coffee and donuts one time, whatever. Make it fun for those who volunteer, make it worth their time, cause they're, they're investing for free. They're, they're passionate about being there or they wouldn't be there, you know. So value them, respect them, hear them, eye contact. I just try, my, my, my best, put my best foot forward each day. Try to treat people like I wanna be treated in this life. Whether they treat me that way or not, that's when I'm gonna try to do my best to do that, so.
Thank you. Councilman Cox?
Two-part question, Dennis. What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position? In addition to the planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job and the occasional call-in during a rental, you will also be expected to attend city council meetings, recreational, Recreation Commission meetings and the occasional DDA meeting. Do you feel you're able to make these time commitments?
I do. Probably over the last year, I've been attending a lot more of the council meetings and the planning commission meetings as I can. And I've not attended the Recreation Committee meetings or the Beautification Commission or the Waterways. But I don't know if it's, I'm nerdy that way. I like policy, I like good policy. I don't really like politics when they get petty, but I like good policy and I like to see things well organized and respectful and bring an excellence to things. I try my best to bring excellence to, to things. So time, I understand it's a part-time position, I understand that you probably work outside those hours too. There's been a lot of volunteer jobs that didn't pay anything that I gave up my, a lot of my time too, cause I was passionate about it, you know. So if it's your passion, you're gonna give more than twenty-five or thirty or forty hours, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna begin it. And so, yeah, it's not an issue, taking meetings on and being present too, being present-minded and listening during those meetings. Not just being there, not just being a body warm in a chair. I wanna be proactive and part of the process and help things grow and move forward. And growth is sometimes slow and sometimes painful for some people, you know, especially, you don't wanna change everything overnight. You don't wanna reinvent the wheel and try to pretend you're something you're not, so.
Thank you.
All right, Treasure Fonty, go to you for question ten.
Short one. Should you be offered the position, when are you available to start?
Yeah, quite honestly, I have two different part-time jobs. I know the workflow and what it entails and I think if I made the right phone calls, it could be in pretty quick order, wouldn't be a two-week notice. I could probably scale down some things and just begin almost working right away. I'm pretty confident of that, although I have not talked out loud with them yet on that level, so. But that's my best foot forward on that, that's my best testament.
Thank you.
Councilman McNabb, question eleven, then we'll go back to you, Treasure Fonty, for your twelve.
I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that you were expecting to ask, for us to ask you?
I can't think of anything. I think you would've asked me, so I really can't say that anything got missed as far as I'm concerned, so.
So thank you. Treasure Fonty, twelve, and then I'll close it with thirteen.
So as we reimagine the Recreation Department, because of the new opening we have now, we're looking at rate schedules and the cost of revenue on our two buildings. As you know, we have two facilities here. Looking at two sides of the coin, if we can't fill one, we get rid of the other? Or do we fill them both? And as your position as the director, do you see yourself expanding into the two facility category? Or are you up to that task to, to, to make it grow?
And I listened, I was able to make the last meeting, but you were, you were all talking about that. And I guess I had the benefit of being on council and we voted for that property. And it made sense as far as like keeping the community, how we wanted to keep the community, use that building the way that we as a city thought it should be used. But at the same time, we made those decisions back then, we had the mindset of that collective body that if it doesn't work out and it's too much of a cost and it's a burden on the community, it can always be raised, we can sell off the community. Maybe I would like personally, like to see, as far as you, just ask me, keeping a big chunk, if that does happen that way. Cause I haven't seen the books, I don't see what's being rented, I don't know how utilized the Cook Building is. Although I've had that, a couple of events that I've attended there. You know, some HVAC issues and it's gonna be pretty costly to get that remedied. So if that, if that property were to be raised, I'd like to see a big chunk of it being saved for the community purposes. And I would love to see that if it were to be raised and sold, that we'd be able to build houses there and revenue for the community again would come back to us, the bulk of it anyway. Cause you know, that, out of seven or eight thousand dollars of that money, a portion of it is for the county and a portion is for the city. But I, I don't know the books, I haven't looked at what the event schedule is like. I know they, they ran a cardio room, cardio like events there and, you know, they rent some events and I just don't know how busy it is. I don't know if it's busy enough and you all know the numbers way better than I do now of how much it's costing us a month. I heard the utilities are three, three to five thousand dollars a month and that doesn't sound real sustainable. So I'd like to see.
But if, if you were in the position, do you see yourself as the person that has the ability to, to expand and to, or reach out to different event coordinators and expand, expand our use of it?
As you jog my, my, and when I first got elected, I met the gentleman from Flat Rock. He was a fellow council member at a Michigan Municipal League Training Event. And he, he was just bringing back the riverfront days they had there in, in Flat Rock. And I think that's what they call it, the Flat Rock River Days or what have you. And I'm like, I could see us partnering, you know, with Flat Rock, we're so close. Let's do some recreational events in Gibraltar together and then we can go and support your events and not, not combine them, but I'm saying do some things with Rockwood. I know we attend their Memorial Day Parade, for example. And the Lions are in their parade and they walk around and do things. And I'd like to see us more build rapport, not that we don't have it, I'm not saying we don't, cause I don't know. I'm not on that side of the fence yet, hopefully I will be. But build a rapport with the other recreation communities around here. Girl's Seal is so close by, Rockwood's so close by, Flat Rock is so close by. So I know we could get some ideas from them, maybe they can learn, you know, a few things from us and we can build that rapport. We already have that great relationship with the DPW departments with Rockwood. So I'd like to see us doing events together, I think it would be a great idea. And then hopefully it answered your question, I'm just thinking off the cuff.
You're, you're doing fine, thank you.
Last question we ask every candidate for any interview for city. Do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody sitting in front of you?
Well, I've, I worked with Pat at the fire department, I sat with him in council. I know everybody on the seat, I've known Mr. McNabb most of my life and yourself, I've been to your home, I've been to your home. So I have friendly relationships, I don't have any interpersonal like connections or commitments or everybody that's sitting here, I've met at least or talked to and had some kind of rapport with. Mr. Blackburn a little bit, not as much, so.
Thank you so much for taking the time for the interview. Council, any final questions? And if not, we'll give you the floor for any closing comments you'd like to make. Lord George, to close, any comments you'd like to add?
Just maybe, I don't know if it's out of turn, but with being in the part-time position, does it qualify for any kind of benefits at all? Like health benefits in particular?
City Administrator Blackburn, you wanna address the benefits question for the position?
No, because it's considered part-time right now, there are no benefits as of this point.
But I had the answer, just wanted to see if it was true, okay.
Thank you.
I can't think of anything else, thanks for your time, appreciate you.
Really appreciate your application and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks Dennis.
Thank you.
Council, our next candidate just walked in, so it's perfect timing if we wanna welcome our next candidate.
Absolutely.
Michael, we'll welcome you up to the podium. Please just begin by stating your name and address and then I'll give you a little playbook on how we're operating the interviews.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michael Voyar and I live at three zero one 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 Mar, Mar Street in Gibraltar.
Thank you for applying for the position. And we have a structure this evening that consists of thirteen questions that all applicants are being asked. We're gonna go around the chambers, one person at a time, and each one will ask you a question. And we're just using our interview guides to capture notes.
Fantastic.
So Treasure Fonty, you wanna kick us off, question number one?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. What do you know about Gibraltar and why do you think you'd be a good fit as a rec department director?
Fantastic. I, I moved here in two thousand and three. I was about four hundred pounds, kinda scruffy. And check, you know, we wanted to move, it's kinda like checking everything out and walked into the community center and I think I scared the hell out of Gil Talbert. And from that moment on, he and I became really good friends. He put me on the Recreation Committee in two thousand and five-ish. And that was about the time that we were having, Dorothy, you may remember, that was the time we were having the Fourth of July committee meetings because they were going to eliminate our programs and I really got involved at that point. Gil, Gil was just so great to me and he was my impression of Gibraltar. And everything I've done and since has always been, you know, like with, with Gil in mind, with Gil. So that's, that's me, that's Gibraltar. My daughter went through the, almost through the entire school system. My son graduated in two thousand and five, my daughter in two thousand and eighteen. So we've been around, we've been around for a while, I guess. We joined the Rec Commission, I worked on there for about ten years and, and I think it went pretty well. Gil, at that time, was suggesting that I may want to eventually replace him. And of course, my line is Gil, no one can ever replace you. And it's just kinda, it kinda went in that direction. I learned your master plans, I learned all the planning in between and all the pieces. I kinda figured out where we had to go and what we had to do and how to do it with no money. That was my big impression of Gibraltar. So like I said, we've been here now, my, well, next month it'll be twenty-two years. And you can call any one of my neighbors, pretty much anyone, and they'll, they'll all tell you that I love this city, I love everything about it. I grew up in Dearborn and I'm, you know, and Dearborn people, they kind of inbred us all the way, you know, Henry Ford classes, the whole nine yards. But we really love, we really love Gibraltar and we intend to stay here as long as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McNabb, question number two?
Yes, what is your philosophy and vision on recreation for all ages in Gibraltar?
That's what this is. I've been working on this for, for a few weeks when I found out that Tammy was, was resigning. And I thought, well, I'd like to see what it was back in the day. What did we do, what were the exciting things? The other part of the, the job was the hall rental aspect. And I'm sure you're gonna cover that when you get there, but that was my degree, that was the work I did. So in this situation, what I wanted to do is answer the questions pertaining to recreation. I think that recreation itself is a, when Mr. Lear was pulling together a program and he made us reevaluate just how important rec is to a community. So my envision is to bring back some of the old programs that we had, create some of the new programs, use some of the other. I went, I referenced a lot of different cities, a lot of different rec programs. Mr. Max over in Brownstown was a friend of mine, we used to talk a lot about different types of programs. Now granted, he's full-time, blah, 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 but I, you know, we used to talk about it. So my plan initially would be something of the nature of at least a once-a-month program themed. And I've got it broken down a little bit more if we ever go, if you wish to any kind of details. But by running some sort of a family plan program once a month, perhaps programs set for children. We've got a good school system, all the schools, everything works well. But I have some ideas on where we might be able to grow programs for our kids, starting from preschool and all the way up, all the way to seniors, that's me now. So I think about that a lot and what we can do or what we should be doing. My programs, if it's okay, I just wanna take a quick look. I'm not gonna throw lots of stuff, but I just wanted to kinda, just over the course of the last couple of days, some of the programs that I wanted to initiate were things like city, city programs, bringing various, bringing various groups and organizations here to help students, could be, I used to have the Secretary of State truck come. We could bring other trucks that we have climbed. that we have, climb the truck like they do in Allen Park, we have ideas in that nature. A Safety Day that actually started with Deb Canterbury, she brought that here and it was really awesome. And I'd like to see if I can bring something back similar to that. We have two big facilities, there's no reason why we can't find some various exercise programs or equipments. I think that in the city of Gibraltar, we're supposed to be at least welcoming to all of our own. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big project to have coffee in the morning, like on a Monday morning, you know, people can drive by, grab coffee and go from your city, you know, or I have Ice Cream Day, I have Pizza Day, I have, you know, again, a former four-hundred pounder, that's all I think about is food. So, let me see, I have written down, we have two parks, as far as I know, I think that we could look into some of the programs, the city of Dearborn came up with this new program that they actually got federal funding for, we might be able to qualify. I started to learn, with my church group, I started to learn how to get grants. So maybe we have opportunities to find other interesting things for our people to have. I think that in the summertime, it would not be outrageous to have like a summer camp for a week or two kids, where the kids can, the parents can dump the kids at night and morning, keep them until three, we have them at lunch and just find silly things to do. I've got a lot of people that could do that. We could also have various, various groups, like field trips, like to Comerica Park or to, to various outlets, maybe the museum, I mean, just things to get people going in the right direction. Also volleyball, bowling field, T-ball, I think the T-ball program went away, if I could understand, maybe we can do something in Gil Talbert's old legacy, how he used to do, I thought it was a great thing. There should be, we used to have some sort of a library. And I thought that, well, you know, I'm sure people have books and I'm sure people are not one of them, but maybe we can do something back in, back in the area, I'm pretty familiar with that building because I worked with Gil in that building quite a bit, maybe we can find an area that we could do some kind of book exchange, some kind of, some kind of an activity to kind of get them there. Overkill, lots of delegation, lots of hope that there'll be a few commissioners, you know, recreation commissioners like what we had. But if we start big and kind of maneuver around, I figured that we could get something going quickly and we can get something going, even if it's just piece by piece as we grow. And of course, whatever the council would allow to happen, I wouldn't do anything without going to the council and say, look, this is my idea, this is how I'd like to take it. So that's kind of what I have envisioned for your recreation program, our recreation program, if you allow me to do something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Muller?
Thank you, thank you. This is a two-part question, Mr. Boyer. In your professional career, what did you find to be the most rewarding aspects of your previous jobs? And what do you think would be the most rewarding aspect of the position you're applying for?
Have you ever seen the program Bar Rescue?
Yeah.
That's kind of what I did for a living for a long time. I would be assigned to various hotels, banquet centers, restaurants. I did it, I did a very large, it was a small convention center. My last glory, everything I've got besides my family and my church work, in my secular life was to find programs and fix them. You don't just go in and make changes. Well, you're a businessman, you know this, you go in, you have to take some time and see what's good, what's bad, keep the good, throw out the bad, rebuild it and see, and I think that this is a really ideal place to do something like that. And that's where I plan on, with my experience, you know, that's what I've been thinking about, how can I rebuild and build all of these? So as far as my accomplishments, I don't remember the second part of your question, I'm sorry.
What do you think would be the most rewarding aspects of this position?
Success. If the program that we did gets us and we get some more of these people, we get the kids, we get people talking, you know, we get, we just get the idea and where people are just going to think of us once in a while, you know, if we're going to have a parade, they're going to show up, if we're going to have a picnic, they're going to show up, if we're going to do a flea market, they're going to show up, you know, they're going to say, oh, yeah, all right, cool.
I agree, success brings people together, no doubt about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Tomasek?
Hi, Katie.
When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
Ms. Katie, I've been working with church groups for twenty years and church is about the cheapest way you have to go, plus there's just never any money to do anything and you got to either learn how to beg or you need to figure out ways to get around the money. Gil was really good at that. I couldn't believe some of the things he pulled off at Kroger or some of the other things. I think that if we build our programs the right way, the money part of it is relevant, but it's not primary. So in budgets, as long as I know about how much I need to spend or what we're trying to get to the end, whether I've designed it and asked you or whether you designed something and asked me and you give me a budget, as long as I know where my budget stands and what I'm trying to get, I will always stay within budgets. It's not an option. When you're, when you're going into a foreclosed hotel, for example, was that, you reached on I-75, there was a Ramada there, everybody I'm sure remembers, they put me in there and they said, okay, you're going to be here for six months, that family decided they don't want it anymore, long story short, I went to foreclosure, the bank took it, I went in because a hotel that's open is going to be worth more than when it's closed, okay? So, and you don't get a budget, you don't get the money, you have to be creative, you have to look for the places that you can get it. So where, money doesn't need to be spent, money's not going to be used. And when there is a need for money, I'll see what's available or I can go campaign for something from different people with permission of the council, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Blackburn?
If selected, what would be your top priorities for your first six to twelve months in the role?
Six to twelve-month program? I guess my first and foremost project, the one that has been gnawing at me for the last couple of days, is communication. I'm going to spend a lot of time figuring out ways to get to the, what did they say, three people short of five thousand in our city? We have to, we have to get the word out. You know, we have to get, to say, hey, you know, come on down. I think for the first six months, I not only had to go in and, I'm not saying Tammy did a good job or a bad job, I'm not, I don't even want to address that. What I want to say is, is I want to go in there and see what Tammy did, what Tammy's doing, what Tammy was succeeded at, what she failed at, and rebuild what might be necessary. And I use the word might because for all I know, she did a great job with everything, I just need to add on, okay? So I'm not disparaging her. So the answer to your question, Mr. Blackburn, this is that I'm going to open up communication the best that I can, get the word out the best that I can, and then I'm going to look for the nicks and the crannies to be able to get us going. And we've, like I said, I talk big, I think big, but when it's all said and done, I realize that we're going to start slower. I know I'm not going to pass around, but this is something I created on my own computer, this is the Ukrainian Cultural Center, I broke it down, events, little silly articles, this took me just a few hours, I made one every month. I don't know how we're going to get them to everybody, but you know, something like that would work. If we get a little more sophisticated, I mean, we can always, you know, always spend some money and get nicer things, but simple, simple is good, but communication and tweaking to get us where we need to be and get us into emotion. The idea isn't, the idea isn't, oh, we got a Rec program, let's do that. The idea is to get it into self-motivation, no, self, where everything goes by itself, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, where everything can move on its own, so that if I leave or if something happens to me, you can plug somebody in, it's not that big of a deal, you know? It's not about me, it's about making sure the gym gets what it needs to keep it going. So that would be, if nothing else, that would be the most important thing I think I would be able to bring to your table as far as being able to do this.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for your application and for being here tonight. Question number six for you is, this position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
About thirty years' worth of experience is the first thing I could tell you. Not only, again, I relate this question to the work that I have done in churches for the most part. I was not only in charge of trying to get their banquet halls up and going, I was also in charge of their classrooms that needed to be, I needed to find out if people are coming in with their own food, if they're not coming in with their own food, how do we charge them, how are we going to let the music kitchen, who's going to clean up, how are we going to, there's so many little factors that you don't think about when you get there. So, of course, at the beginning, we have to identify what the program is and then I got to see if there's any way I can enhance it so that the city can make more money on the programs, and then on top of that, be able to execute it with its little problem, its little, little problems and issues as necessary. It's not to add to my workload, but it would be something that we would need to stay on. I mean, it's just the way that it goes. In addition to banquet halls and operations and all that, it is condition of the buildings, the properties, curb appeal, coordinating activities between this group and that group and the other group and the political group and the women's group and everybody's going to want a little piece of getting in there somehow and it needs to be coordinated. It's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, but that, that takes a little bit more, a little bit more patience sometimes is the best word for it, but my idea, in this case, we'll have some sort of a large calendar that can be, that can be present and conspicuous and then we build from there. I think personally, after watching the hall, working the hall, helping with the hall, plus all my other halls and buildings that I worked with, and my experience with that church building, the old St. Victor, you guys can make a ton of money, you really can. I mean, and not the kind of ton of money where we're going to, you know, we're going to collect five thousand and spend four thousand, I'm talking about, there's money in this business. It could become a financial, it could become a financial line item for you down the road. I don't know how important that it plays in because I keep on the outside of that, you know, as far as what's concerned, but I think that given the opportunity to put it together, this could really become a really great thing, not to mention by reputation. The city will, you know, the city could enjoy a tremendous reputation that they do a good job and the city's clean and the policemen are close by and the coffee's hot, you know what I'm saying? That sounds silly, but it really works, it really, really works.
Thank you so much.
Good.
Councilwoman Wood, question number seven?
Ms. Dorothy.
Mike, how would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community and how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
Good question. I know how I would approach, I know how I would approach getting the word out. Again, the communication is one of the very top, most important. If we, we could have the best party in the world, but if nobody knows, this doesn't matter. So I think that I would ask, one of the first things I would ask is just how much latitude I can have to communicate, to get the word out. I think there are awesome ways to get, get social media. I went on our social media the other night and it's kind of a trick bag there. Nothing, nothing bad, but I think that it can be formatted in such a way that we could use it to our advantage to get the word out. I think flyers are really important. If we still get, for example, how would we get flyers out? If we still get the 33rd District Court people to come down, we, boy, we used to work them out, we could get them to do almost anything. So I would use them, just get the word out to everybody, get the, you know, up at the stores, we get, see if we can get sports store sponsors, we can get things like that. So to answer your question, the idea of getting it out is all in the communication and it's really difficult, but it's very, very doable for a smaller community like ours. We would have to decide just how much we would allow or welcome, maybe is a better word, other communities to come. Of course, we want them if they're spending money, but this isn't designed for them. I don't mean to sound, you know, crude about it. And then the other part, I guess the reviews would be the only thing we can start with. There's no real definite number that we can work with, we can't set goals and say this or that because many of the programs are going to be brand-new. Many of the ideas are going to be brand-new. There are a lot of people out there, as I've been given a stand, that ask for programs like this and have no idea. So how do we get to them, how do we know if we're succeeding with, I guess by word-of-mouth? I did create another document, I'm not going to dig it out, it's how are we doing per se, you know, greatest, tell me what you think, tell me what you think, what would you do better, put a big suggestion box in the thing. I think that'll give us a lot of, a lot of ideas, people come up with some silly stuff, but sometimes you could get a real diamond in that rough. And then, once we got our first year and we can look to compare what's good, what's bad, what grows, what falls, you know, so on and so forth, okay? I hope that gets it there, that was a tough question.
That's fine, thank you.
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is supposed to be comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by Mayor and City Council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities and events?
The recreation, do you, do we actually, we don't even have, I don't think I've ever seen eleven members on the Recreation Commission. I was going through my old, I still got all my old emails from way back, I don't know what, I'm like an email hoarder or something, I was reading through them, I got a bunch of stuff with you and your husband and, you know, things that we were writing about for the Fourth of July, I'm like, oh my God, this is so cool. To answer your question, a successful program, things that get exciting and things that people want to be a part of and the ideas that grow, they actually, they actually will bring us eleven, twelve, fifteen, twenty people, everybody's going to want to join in. We, I don't know how many you have, I saw a plea out for, for people to join, so I don't know how many are involved at this point. There are people that, given director, oh, given a director position, I know some people I'd like to ask, you know, and of course, your scrutiny, I believe what I had to do is fill out applications, stand up here for the Recreation Commission, you know, twenty years ago, I'm thinking, but I think that, I run a foundation. It's, it became international recently because we have a member from Toronto, so we're this big shot international foundation now, raising money for, in our, in our church, priests are allowed to marry in the Orthodox Church, so a lot of these young priests have wives and some have kids and no money, and they're hard. So I've learned to, you learn how to find the best of the best to the best and try to incorporate them to bring them in. And that's what I would probably do here, see if we can get two or three more and how would I incorporate them? Well, I hope that I can delegate some stuff, that's what happened to me. I got delegated into all kinds of different positions. I believe in positive reinforcement, I believe in coaching and correcting as a manager, I was manager of several different facilities, I know how to work people, deal with people, I know how to get the best out of people, I used to coach basketball and softball, so I had a lot of, a lot of experience with people. I enjoy if we can get a nice crew. I don't know, you know, I don't know how many we can get and whatever you give me, I can work with, does that make sense?
Yeah, good question.
Thank you.
Good evening. Two-part question. What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position? In addition to planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job, the occasional call-in during a rental, you'll also be expected to attend city council meetings, Recreation Commission meetings, and an occasional DDA meeting. Are you able?
I'm sorry?
DDA meeting.
Oh, DDA, okay, good.
Are you able to make these time commitments?
I am a Realtor, okay? I got sick about ten years ago, it was, it was bad, that's why, you know, I'm in better shape and all I have left is my wife and me at our house for the most part. Anything that needs to be done, I'm like almost always here, okay? So my commitment to Gibraltar, if you commit to me, my commitment back is going to be bigger than the one you give me. Answer your question, this is a part-time position. The part-time position is probably maxed at twenty-eight because if you do twenty-nine, then the whole world changes and blah, 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 I get it, I get it. I also believe that this is a salary type of position. So with that being said, my commitment is going to be a lot more than twenty-eight hours. I'm a firm believer, first of all, for the recreation, I don't think the recreation depart, part of the job, other than the meetings and some of the brainstorming that would be in there, it's not going to take a lot of time. And a lot of the stuff, I just do it at my home, it's just as easy, I'm only a few blocks from here. The other part of the job, in all frankness, the other part of the job is going to be very time-demanding, the banquet halls. There is no, well, just sign them up and let them go and then when you're done, pull the door shut. It doesn't work like that, you know? It's two o'clock, you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here, you know that, you have to be there to pull it out, okay? I don't care where you are, I had a hall in downtown Detroit, I had a hall at Fifteen and John R., I had a hall at Michigan and Livernoy. and Livernoy, I had, you know, I had the one right here, I had the Reach on 75, all the same. So what I'm saying to you, Mr. Cox, is that the hall rental part of this job is going to consume a lot of time. My wife is already shaking her head. She's like, seriously, we're never going to see you again, because that's what it usually ends up being like. We don't have, we don't have a crew, like I've always been spoiled to, where you have two or three people, except for maybe the, the 33rd District guys, you know, stuff like that. We don't have a crew that's going to come in and clean, a crew that's going to set up banquet hall rentals, a crew that's going to make sure that we got what we need in the kitchen, the kitchen is clean, when, you know, I mean, there is so many inspections and so many things that we have to deal with. So to answer that, part of the question, this is going to be far more than 28, and I'm completely committed, and I'm using that word on purpose, I'm committed to do what it takes to keep, to get this hall program up and going, and I know it's going to take probably 40, 50 hours of its own. To me, growing up, 50 hours is part-time anyways, so it's, it's not a problem. Plus, like I said, I live a couple blocks over, so it's not like it's going to become anything. I think that somewhere down the line, if you allow me, I think that somewhere down the line, you may want to revisit that position. I remember when Gil had it, it was two positions, two paychecks, two, I sold him a car, and I, I got to know his finances a little more intimately, which is like, fine, but I just remember he was getting two separate checks, because it was two separate jobs. Might have to revisit that down the road, depending on how important you want direct program for the kids and for the families here, versus how much do you really want to be in the hall rental business? It's not hard work, but it's time. And again, I'll commit my time. I don't have a problem with that. You know, like I said, I, I kind of, 10 years ago, I kind of took a pretty bad hit, and I wasn't even supposed to be here, and I made it. So I thank God every day, and I do things every day. My commitments currently is my real estate, which is full part-time. My church and the church mission group, my, also my, my foundation, which only consumes a couple hours a month, but nevertheless, because I got people in Orlando and Arizona and now Toronto, they're delegating, just like what we do here. My brain may be going in different directions, but physically, I'll be here. When we do a hall rental, we have to have somebody there. You can't have the cops, you know, down the street, maybe we'll need them, you can't have some, you gotta be there. You gotta make sure that kids aren't climbing, you know, and you gotta make sure that people, if they're drinking, are in control. So I think that part, I'm worried about as far as, but as far as what and how deep we are, because I have no idea what your numbers are like in the hall rental. I just know that you can do tremendous work for that. So the answer, the short answer to your question is, is I'm going to do whatever it takes. The long answer is, I realize it's going to be a lot more than 28 hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Treasurer Fonte, take us question number 10.
Yeah, this one, he'll give you a little breather. This is a short answer, I think. Short question.
Okay.
Yeah. Should you be offered this position, when would you be available to start?
I've already cleared up my schedule so that I could start pretty quickly. I also realized that Tammy, I believe, left on 31 January, so you're already under the gun. I was preparing, going through old files, finding things that I like, finding things that I think would be applicable once I get in a little, little deeper. But I should be able to, I should be able to jump in pretty quickly, depending on who's going to mentor and bring me into the place, or how much you'll allow me, and I like that word, how much you'll allow me to create in this job. I mean, I know you're not going to. I mean, I could start like, this week, that kind of, I've already cleared it up, so I could do it if you wanted me. Okay?
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Wood, now we'll go to you, and then back to you, Treasurer Fonte.
Mike, I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that we're expecting us to ask?
You know, I, I was so deliberate in my longer answers, because I wanted to make sure I hit all the points I wanted to get in ahead of time, like, like the hall question, and like some, like Dorothy's question, when I was trying to get to. So for the most part, I didn't ask about salary, I didn't ask what the wages, I didn't, if we get that far, we'll talk about it, please don't make that a big deciding issue. If I'm the best of your five, then let, sit down and tell me what I need to do, and as a Gibraltar resident, I'll, I'll, I'll do what I need to, to get you up and get you going, and, and give you my best shot. Let me see, and just, just the patience. The hardest thing in the world, and I'm sure many of you had it, the hardest thing in the world is having a boss. But when you have two, four, six, eight, 10, 12 bosses, it gets tougher. And fortunately, you know, the other guys always had this big guy with the beard, you know, I'm just teasing, you know, the, the god thing, they always had the higher-up things. But patience is, I'm, I'm, if I'm in it, I'm in it for all of it. I'm in it for the right reasons, I'm in it for what we needed to do. Like I said, Gil was a tremendous influence on me. I wanted to do this. I only wanted to do this, because I remember, I remember the fantastic time I had with Gil Talbert, and, and he's deserving of all the praise that we give him these days, so.
Thank you so much. Councilman McNabb, you want to take us, or sorry, Treasurer Fonte, we'll go back to you. We got, yeah, for your final question that you had crafted earlier.
Last question. Thank you for your enthusiasm.
Oh, thank you.
It's been a pleasure. But as we reimagine the Recreation Department because of this opening, we're examining the rates of, of the rental, and we're examining the cost to revenue for the buildings. We have two of them, as you know, and one of the exciting things is that we either expand, as you were talking, into that facility and make it what some of us think that it could be, by utilizing both buildings, or we have to come to the conclusion of getting rid of one and operating with one. How do you envision that? Do you, do you?
Direct commission position is easy. It's very easy. This is what I've done most of my life. I'm a father four times, a grandpa eight times, I've even got three great-grandkids. My whole life lives for kids, and the kids that they have to do. I made, I, I printed copies of my resume. I didn't know if you needed them or not. Got a little introductory letter I put in there that just brags about the kind of things that I, that kind of things that I, I wanted to do, what I wanted to bring, how I feel about where I'm at, what I'm trying to do. I feel the harder I can work, and the better I can work, the nicer this place is, the nicer this place is, the better we all grow. That's my philosophy. So thank you. The enthusiasm is sincere, it's genuine, and I want to, I want it to be right. As far as the programs, again, this is new. Tammy's been, well, Gil died in 15, I think, so that's been 10 years, that the program is probably up for a big, you know, looksee, and to see what you like and don't like, and what you want to grow. I can create, I just need to know your ideas.
So you, you made reference to, you know, we have like a diamond in the rough here with, with the other building, and looking at event planners and that, to expand that building to its full potential. Do you see yourself in that role, that's capable of doing that?
Yes, sir. I, I, I live for that. That's what I've done with all my jobs, with all my assignment positions. It wasn't like, I went to this job and then got fired, and went to this job, it wasn't built like that, it was sending me on to the next project. This, to me, is just, it's a project. It's a project that, it's just the potential that's there, and the strength is there. I think that, once you decide what you want, let me figure out a way to present on how to get there, and then you decide, and then we execute. Does that, does that make sense?
It does, because it, it could be a facility that brings some substantial revenue in if handled correctly.
That's my point. And there's ways of getting around all of that and with all of that, but right now, as I was given, from, from the mayor, I was given to understand that, you know, this is it, this is what we got to work with right now. I think it's a great starting point. You, you've got a lot of real potential here, you really do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And just since you brought it up, we did get a copy of everything you submitted in your application, so all council and department heads have made sure we had that background, so we really built the interview.
On the back of that was a silly little letter I wrote that said, you know, that I was, belonged to this group, and that I lived in Gibraltar, blah, blah, blah. So that's why I wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Yeah. Last question for you that we're asking every applicant. Do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody sitting in the chambers in front of you?
No. Other than hello friends and whatnot, I'm not related to anybody in a, or in any way, shape, or form to anyone in the city.
Awesome. Mr. Boyer, thank you so much for putting your application forth.
Thank you for having me.
Council, any final questions? Okay, great. Any closing comment you'd like to make before we get to our next applicant?
If you decide that I am good enough for at least another opportunity, I would appreciate that. If, if it comes that you feel that someone else might be more qualified, or maybe younger, or maybe energetic in a different direction, and you decide to do that, then I ask you to please let me know, and I'd be happy to work with that person to get them up and get them going. I know that's the last thing that someone would want to say when they're going for a job, but I think it's more important that you get the right person. I'm hoping that I'm the person you want, but if not, I would be happy to, to do that, but I don't want to be on the recommission. Sorry. You live right down the street from me, so you know, you can always ask anytime you want, so.
Thank you so much for your time and your energy and your responses this evening. We appreciate it.
With your permission, I'm also going to leave, because I didn't want to hear anybody else's answers, that's why I came in so early, so late. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Council, we have our next applicant, so let's welcome Austin. Austin, I'll have you state your name and your address, make sure that light's still green.
Yep, still green.
All right. And then, just so you see the flow, I think you got to witness some of that. We have 13 questions, we're asking every applicant. We'll go around chambers, every individual will ask you a question, and at the end, you'll see, you'll have some time for any closing comments.
Okay.
Any questions before we get started?
Oh.
All right, great.
Uh, no, no questions. Thank you guys for having me, and for considering me for this position. My name is Austin Reynolds, I live at 17318 Azalea Court, which is right over there in Brownstown, right across from Carlson. Did you say you'd get to know me, or?
We're going to turn you over to our next question. So Treasurer Fonte's got question number one for you.
Yeah, this will fill in the blanks. Tell us a little bit about yourself. First of all, thank, thank you for coming in.
No, thank you for having me.
And your time spent here. Tell us a little bit about yourself. What do you know about Gibraltar, and why do you think you're a good fit as our Recreation Director?
So I have grown up in Gibraltar my whole life. I went to Parsons, then Schumate, then Carlson. I played youth baseball in Gibraltar. I know how important some things are to Gibraltar, like the 4th of July. I know that I took a look at the Parks and Rec Plan, the five-year plan that you guys had on the website. I saw the budget, I know that a significant portion of that went towards the 4th of July. I can see why, that's very important to the city. As for myself, I work at the Donovan Family YMCA as the sports coordinator, so I have a lot of experience with recreational programs already. Grown up in Gibraltar, know about Gibraltar, and then also do rec programs, so I feel like those two things combined make me a perfect fit for the position.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman McNabb, take us question number two.
Thank you. What is your philosophy and vision for recreation for the city of Gibraltar, all ages?
Absolutely. I think it's important that we focus on all ages. I know that sometimes it gets misconstrued as, okay, all ages, you know, we can do something for the seniors, but youth, 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 and youth is very important, and I would love to build youth programs, but senior and older adults also just as important. I would love to get some programs that everyone can do. I know that these days, pickleball is very important, and accessible to everyone of all ages. At the Y, we have pickleball. Our seniors at the Y love it, and we have a lot of them, so I would love to introduce that. I know it's not very expensive, the paddles aren't expensive, the net would just be portable net. More youth programs, we run basketball clinics, baseball, floor hockey. We have everything you can think of for recreational classes for youth. So I would like to introduce all that, obviously, slowly, at a slower pace, see what's popular, put some feelers out, and see what we would like to have. And then for older adults, we would like to have some classes too, and maybe, you know, if some people want to learn some new things, new sports, have some instructors for that, older adults, like seniors. I would also like pickleball and some other lower-intensity things that maybe some seniors wanted to do, such as pickleball, and then we can obviously brainstorm more things if it comes to it. Yeah, I would love to just add more classes.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Muller?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Austin, for, for being here today. In your professional career, and this is a two-part question, what did you find to be the most rewarding aspects of your previous job? And also, what do you think the most rewarding aspects of this position will be?
So for my job at the Y, the most rewarding aspect is just seeing the happiness on people's faces as they do these classes and learn new things, and just experience joy, like just getting active and out there. For this city, I would love, growing up here, so I would love to bring all that to Gibraltar. I want Gibraltar residents to be, I don't know, happier, I guess would be the right word, in their active lives, you know, if they could get out there and do more fulfilling things that they want to do, and if we can offer that to them, I would love that. I love when people get to really experience new things, and maybe had passions in the past that they can get back to. I love helping people out with that, and having them find joy in activities and rec sports.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Tomasek?
When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff, and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
Okay, so, I don't know if you guys know about the Y, but we're not loaded, so I have had to deal with this before. We've had staff in my department at times where I'm the coordinator, so I have staff below me, so we've had that down to zero at times. I have had to step up myself, and I run classes. I will do it myself, I'll do basketball clinics, floor hockey clinics. I've played these sports, I would offer them and then teach them myself. Obviously, now we have more staff, so I don't have to do that as much. I give, you know, a little packet of, hey, guys, here's what we got to do for the day, this is what you got to teach the kids. And just, so, for the lower-cost stuff, a lot of these sports sometimes don't have to cost a lot, like soccer's just, you know, you can get those cheap nets, floor hockey cheap nets, and then a ball for soccer, plastic stick, and then a plastic puck for floor hockey. So we can run these low-cost programs at first, see if there's any popularity, any attendance, and then see where we can go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Blackburn?
If, if selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to 12 months in the role?
That's a good question. So we have to fill that recommission. I would love to do that, try to get that done almost immediately. I would like to put some surveys out there, and then maybe go talk to people in person about what they would like to see for the city going forward. I would love to start with maybe a couple sports, see which has the most attendance, keep running those, maybe the less popular ones, we kind of push to the side for a little bit. Because attendance, while it is a lot, because you're committing, if you put a class up, like, hey, we're going to do basketball clinic from this date to this date, you have to stick to that, and if you can't run it, you have to realize, hey, this wasn't able to run, we can't offer this for a minute, we have to try to pivot to other things, and maybe later, we can come back to basketball, or whatever the sport may be.
Great. Question number six. This position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
So I run out the gym quite frequently. We have to book multiple things. We have our own league going on right now. We actually run the official City of South Kate Youth Basketball League, so I have to allocate time for that on what's on Saturdays right now, and then we have practices throughout the week. I'm very good at keeping a schedule of what we have going on. We can't double-book things. We have two sides of the gym, so whichever's available, we need to realize, hey, we can put things on this side, but we cannot put them on the other side. And then, as for the money portion, I would keep that both on a physical copy as well as a digital copy. Make sure the two match at all times. Keep a good track of everything that we've got, all the rentals, and have that just on hand at all times.
Thank you so much. Councilman Wood, question number seven.
Okay. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
So, I would try to implement one thing at a time and see if it works. Whether it works or not, big portion of that, like I said, is attendance, but you have other factors that could take away from maybe what's going on that day, like the weather. Maybe the weather was poor, so you didn't get a lot. I would love to ask the city what they want, you know? And if they do want a certain thing and it gets good attendance and people seem happy about the outcome of said thing, then I would love to keep doing that, whether that be monthly, annually, whatever it is. And then if it doesn't, you just have to step back, take a step back and realize, hey, can we do something with this differently? Or is this something we just have to get rid of and replace it with something new?
Okay. So, is that how you would measure the, what was the, let me get this, measure whether or not those activities were successful? So, that's how you would be judging that?
Yeah, attendance mostly, and then, you know, if people had good feedback on the event. I would love to ask for feedback. I already do with our league. I ask the coaches every week. I put out a week recap. Hey, guys, what did you like this week? What did you not like? What's going on at the practice facilities? How were the games? Did you like the reffing? Just any feedback that people that were at the event can give me, as well as attendance numbers, gives me a big idea of how the event went in general.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Valentine?
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of eleven volunteers appointed by Mayor and City Council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities and events?
I would love to use the Recreation Commission as maybe a, hey, guys, want to touch base with you, see what you're thinking about this idea or that idea. Or if you guys have ideas of your own, I would ask the Rec Commission to present their ideas to me. And then when we have events, I would love to have them come out, help out, you know, if they're available, which if they're on the Rec Commission, I would hope they would be. Obviously, not every time is someone going to be available, so whichever role we can put them in. And then, everyone is different with their roles. I know that, having staff of my own. I know that some people are good at some things, while other people may not be as good at it, so you have to put them in different roles. See where they thrive and then try to keep them there and see if they can maybe grow eventually, but we're trying to throw good events, so wherever they thrive, I'd like to put them there.
Thank you. Councilman Cox?
Good evening. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Two-part question. What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position? In addition to the planning and attending of events, the daily demands of the job and the occasional call-in during a rental, you will also be expected to attend City Council meetings, Recreation Commission meetings, and an occasional DDA meeting. Are you able to make these time commitments?
Absolutely. I wrote in my notes that I put on my phone. I didn't have them on paper, so I just didn't bring it out. But I put in my notes that I would love to be involved with the DDA, see what they're doing, see what we can work with them. I would love to be at those meetings. I know I can, and I think it's a need. You should want to be at those meetings to see what's going on, to see how you can work together. And then what was the first part of that question?
It was just, what is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position?
So it's going to be a lot more time commitment towards the start while you're learning things, and then once you can prioritize and optimize what you're doing. The time commitment will still be very high. I understand this is a part-time job. I think I heard, was it Michael, say twenty-eight hours?
Yeah, after twenty-eight.
So, in my role now, is already a part-time job. It's twenty-five. I find myself going to twenty-five and then a bit over weekly, just because it's a busy season. I can see myself at the beginning having to really work all those hours, like, it's going to be a lot at the beginning, and then as you optimize, you obviously still have to work a lot of hours, but you really get, once you get your feet wet, you know what you're doing more.
Thank you.
Just one thing if I can add, Councilman Cox, to that question?
Sure.
When you think about that and your existing commitment, is there any, like, hard structure to your existing commitment, meaning days of the week or hours of the week?
Absolutely, yeah.
That we would need to be considering, if you were to consider you for this position that we have?
No, I would be leaving that position for this position.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Treasure Fonti will go to you for question number ten.
Short question. Should you be offered the position? When are you available to start?
Two weeks after the day you tell me I am, so I can give my job notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McNabb, and then we'll go back to Treasure Fonti.
Austin, I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask you?
I did think maybe because I went on the City of Gibraltar website, that you guys would ask about the five-year plan for the Parks and Rec from, I believe it was 2014 to 2019. I understand that's a little bit dated now, but I didn't see a more current master plan, so I figured that's the one we were going to base some things off of. I thought you would maybe ask about that, the budgeting of how it's in there. I know it talks about our working relationship with the city of, with Gibraltar School District in there, and how we use their facilities, and how we need to have our own to kind of, not separate, but I know they have school activities that take priority over the general public. So I figured maybe we'd talk about Gibraltar School District relationship, working relationship with the City of Gibraltar. I also thought you might ask about some newer ideas. Like, I had an idea in my head of maybe a rental system for sports equipment, like if we had rollerblades or basketballs that we could rent out, take someone's name and address, and then give them a certain set of amount of days so they can try something and then bring it back. I thought that'd be a good idea. So new ideas, and then working relationship with Gibraltar School District.
Appreciate that. We have an incredible relationship with Gibraltar School District, but I appreciate you for bringing that up, especially in context of the recreational or youth engagement activities. Treasure Fonti, we'll go back to you for question number twelve, and then I'll close it with question number thirteen.
So the vacancy right now has created the ability for us to reimagine the Recreation Department. So with that, we're looking at rate structures of our existing two buildings. Hopefully, you're aware that we have two facilities. We're also looking at the cost to revenue on both those buildings to ascertain if one is all we need or if the second one is a right fit for us. But that's going to take a Recreation Director to help promote that. Some of us see a potential in the second building to really expand with events and event planners. Others might see it a different way. But if you were to look at that, both buildings, and look at the potential in both buildings, do you see yourself as somebody that can reach out to event planners yourself, otherwise other companies or entities that could help us imagine that into a facility that can bring substantial revenue into the city?
Absolutely, I can see myself in that role. And when you say the second facility, are you talking about the Cook Community Center?
Yes.
I do see that one.
Yeah.
That one can definitely grow. I know we also have the Gilth Albert Community Center. I know we have both of them. I think that's a very unique space, how they're not connected in a way, but there's just a feel between them. I feel like there's a lot of stuff we can do between the two, and then that Cook Community Center definitely can grow, and I think I am the right person for that.
Thank you.
Great. Final question we ask for any applicant. Do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody in front of you?
I do not.
Great, thank you. I want to sincerely thank you for your time and putting your application forth, and for the answers to all your questions. Council, any final questions or comments from you?
Thank you.
Well, I'll let you close out with any comments you'd like to finish with.
Well, guys, thank you for having me and considering me for the role. It was great being able to interview for this, and I really am passionate about this. I'm very passionate about sports and recreation and all those classes, and then I feel like we can do a lot of things with the parks in this city, and I would love to improve all of that for the City of Gibraltar. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Have a great night. All right, Council, we have one applicant interview remaining. I'm not seeing the applicant in chambers yet. Do we want to take a five-minute recess?
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead, motion for a five-minute recess?
Make the motion.
Motion by Muller, is your second?
Second.
Second by Cox. Katie, please call roll.
Valentine?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Let's be back at 6:21.
I'm not going anywhere. This guy here. Oh. Hold on. She's been expecting. I haven't seen him in such a long time.
I have never seen him, but he is so enthusiastic. I've never met the guy before. So enthusiastic.
All the time with Gil and everything. I was like, yeah.
No, we worked a lot with Gil in recreation and all that. I mean, he was always there with Gil and helping.
I liked him. He's my first choice so far.
You know what? I wasn't sure how he was going to be, because I haven't seen him.
It's okay, no.
But I want to talk about enthusiastic, and he has got ideas.
He's got plans. He's got it on paper. He's prepared. He was prepared.
He was prepared, but you know what? He always did enjoy that stuff. He always enjoyed it, you know? We had so much fun with Gil, and, you know, because I joined beautification in 2003, and I got on it because of Gil.
Really?
Yes.
Do you want to prove it?
Yes. And it's how I got on beautification. And after I joined, she quit. You got me on you and then you left? And so I've been volunteering ever since 2003, you know? And we always ended up helping recreation. We always had, you know, ended up, and just like the court workers. We used court workers back then. We still use court workers. And they're very helpful. I mean, you need extra people, you know, schedule something for a Saturday, and Gil would have them help clean the community center and all that.
Yes, I remember that, yeah.
But, yeah, it was so fun to see him, because, yeah, he was a big guy. He was a pretty big guy.
Really? He was really that weight? Four hundred pounds, yeah?
Yeah.
Man, he's the note. Yeah, I like him. The only thing is, there's so much work, and they don't get that much pay, you know? I think we need to do something about that eventually.
I know. Right now, I don't think that we need two people or full-time, because we don't have anything. But once you start getting back into it and having all of those events and things, it does take up time.
It's a lot more than twenty-eight hours.
But you know what? I think that we need to have more activities and big events like that than rentals, because the building was built for the community, not for just rental, but for groups and clubs and, you know, like the old fifties and all these things. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so.
I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody? They're all good. She's all better than you. And, you know, like, and today's a different day, you know, different era, so. I guess so. Hi. Hello. How's everybody?
I'm going, yes. So you don't want to be screaming at everybody, talking loud?
Yeah.
I was pushing this morning, trying to get some sort of movement.
Well, that could be too aggressive. We don't have this, we don't have that.
Yeah, I don't know.
No earplugs, no face masks, glasses, and not a virtual exam.
I didn't realize that. My kids were more organized, they thought. Guess who we're talking about, gosh.
They're looking at it, they go get it away.
Yeah, I know, these people, they're very well.
You know, well, probably. I know. That's what they said. There was a couple more then? That's it?
We're at the 21 mark, so we'll ask you to get seated whenever you are finished. All right. We'd be looking for a motion from Counsel to re-enter our special meeting of interviews.
Make that motion.
Motion by Molnar, second?
Second.
Second by Wood. Katie, please call roll whenever you're ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb? Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Welcome back. We are now with our last applicant, so we'd ask you to approach the podium just to give you an overall flavor of how we're structuring these. We have 13 questions for every applicant this evening.
Okay.
And we're going to go person by person in front of you. They're going to each ask you a question, give you some chances to respond.
Okay.
The only thing we need from you to start, before we get to question number one, is your name and your address.
Okay. My name is Jessica Walton, and my address is 30610 Point Drive, Gibraltar.
Well, thank you so much for being here and for applying. Treasurer Fonti will take you to question number one.
All right.
All right. Welcome, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for interviewing me.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. What do you know about Gibraltar, and why do you think you'd be a good fit as our Parks and Recreation Director?
Well, I've lived in Gibraltar since 2007. My husband grew up here. He's been a lifetime resident. We love the city. We, I have been a hairstylist for 25 years. I have three children. Two of them graduated from Gibraltar, and I have one that's in eighth grade, so she'll go through Schumate as well. A lot of that I love about the community, I just love our community. I don't know how much more. I love how everybody wants to come out. I love that people help each other here in the city. I love that it's very beautiful here. There's a lot of outdoor natural resources. As far as why I would be a good fit for Recreation Director, I feel that I am very good under pressure. I'm definitely, I've been in the, I've been in, owned a salon for seven years. I've been a stylist for 25 years. In that job, you are faced with lots of different personalities, lots of different people. So I feel like I'm very good under pressure. I'm very good with timing, very organized. I think as far as planning big events, I feel like I'm very confident in that. A lot of it, I relate back to my job behind the chair and owning a salon, because there is so many things going on at once. And I feel like, when I think about the recreation position, it seems like a lot of moving parts at once, too. So definitely multitasking. Those are some of my qualities that I would say I'm very confident in. That answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McNabb?
What is your philosophy and vision for recreation for all ages in Gibraltar?
Well, my philosophy is there is already a lot of good programs. I do feel like we could add more things, but I think for all ages, it would be nice to have programs for, you know, even younger than we have now, even older than we have now. I know at that special meeting, I brought up some things that I thought would be a great fit, would be like a golf program for kids or all ages, even someone who might not know how to golf, but is an adult, you know, things like that, more outdoor things. I was brainstorming some things that I thought would bring a lot of value to kids these days, or adults, but a lot of outdoor stuff. I was thinking in my mind of the nature habitat down the street, like programs that we could, you know, collaborate with them on to get kids off the phones and off the computers and more outside, and that sort of thing. I myself love nature. I spend a lot of time outside. I've done lots of different courses, like mushroom hunting. I've raised butterflies for over 10 years, so I know I'm very knowledgeable about that, and like raising plants and everything that goes together. I love gardening as well, so I think a lot of those kind of programs, more people, if we had them, would utilize them.
Thank you. Councilman Molnar?
Right on. This is a two-part question, so I'm going to ask them both at the same time, though. It's short.
You're going to give me the hard time, huh?
No. In your professional career, what do you find the most rewarding aspects of your current job? And what do you think would be the most rewarding aspects of this job?
So in my career now, I really, really enjoy helping people look and feel the best about themselves. I think sometimes people have a hard time expressing what they want on the inside to reflect on the outside, so I really enjoy that. I mean, I've dealt with so many things through doing hair sickness, divorces, you know, there's a lot. And you wouldn't believe, being behind the chair and helping men and women, you wouldn't believe the influence and impact. So I think that's the connection with people is my favorite part, and I feel like in this position, it would be the same thing. I feel like connecting with, you know, there's obviously going to be lots of connections through this position. And I feel like this job is, really, I mean, this is what the people remember the city about. They come here and they say, I went to this awesome thing, and that's what I remember. And I feel like I would be a good fit for that, because I'm good with people, so.
Thank you.
Clerk Tomasic?
All right, hi.
Hi.
When you're faced with limited resources, financial, staff, and otherwise, how do you prioritize projects and allocate resources effectively?
Well, I, this is a little bit more about my background, but I have been a mom since I was 17. I had my first child at 17, and I was a single mother, which makes you very resourceful. I feel like throughout my life, I've always made the best of what I had, prioritizing, obviously, you know, the things, the needs, the needs first, the want second. I feel like I'm good at coming up with alternate solutions, very creative, so I'm willing to put in the work to like build things if needed and that kind of stuff, repurposing things and that aspect. I feel like I've done that my whole life, so it's, it actually gives me a lot of pride to make the best out of what I have and make it great.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Blackburn, you want to take us to question five?
If selected, what would be your top priorities for the first six to 12 months in the role?
That question is a little tricky for me, because I don't really know what the needs would be. I guess, looking after that special meeting, I would say to prioritize what programs we'd like to focus on the most. But I know that this job also comes with a lot of other things, like Fourth of July and that kind of stuff, so that seems like it would be the top priority to keep everything rolling the way it has been. I don't know if I'm answering that correctly, but that seems like that would be the number one, is to keep things in order how they are, to the best of their ability. It seems like this would be a big role to fill, that she, Tammy, obviously did a great job at it. So, you know, keeping everything at least the same would be number one to me.
Thank you so much. Question number six. This position requires you to schedule and coordinate rentals of our community centers. What is your experience with booking platforms and keeping ledgers of payments and receipts to stay organized when managing the rental facilities?
I use an online booking system in my salon right now. I don't let people online book themselves. I do it. I enter everything manually, because I don't want any mistakes, so if I do it, I know it's all correct. So that's how I do it now. As far as payments, too, I do everything through an online booking system right now. I mean, I would be comfortable to do it manually if that was the case, but it's very easy with the online. It just, you know, everything stays organized. It's in there. There's no room for error or anything like that, so. I mean, is that what you were asking me, or?
Absolutely. We want to gather that experience just in context of our need here.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that's how I do it now, and it's very efficient.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Wood?
Okay. Let me see. Situated, all right. How would you design and implement new community events and programs to ensure it meets the needs of our community? And how would you measure whether or not those activities were successful?
Again, that would go back to, a lot of things, I don't know how signups are done now, but I feel like when you have online signups, it's so easy to see the interest, when people can go on and click it and pay for it, and everything's right in one spot. I don't know if that is an option of how you do it, but then, you know, your reports at the end of the year also are on point, so you can say, this did really well, this did not. I'm very good at Canva and those types of things, too, for advertising and promoting. I think I'm very confident in social media, so I could do a lot of social media. That would be very helpful, you know, for the events to go out and that kind of stuff. I think those are very good avenues for getting more interest in.
Okay.
First of all, what is the name of your salon?
My salon is called The Beauty Parlour. It's in Tretton on West Jefferson. It's across the street from the Tretton Police Station.
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is comprised of 11 voluntarias appointed by Mayor and City Council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities and events?
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that one? I apologize.
In addition to your position, the Recreation Department also relies on the Recreation Commission, which is supposed to be comprised of 11 voluntarias appointed by the Mayor and the City Council. How will you work with and utilize the Recreation Commission to help guide and carry out recreation activities and events? How would you work with that commission?
Well, hopefully, we would work really well together, and everybody would, you know, I could, they could help me with everything, from the setup to the breakdown to advertising. I think I could even be helpful in getting more people to volunteer for the commission, just with like social media and that kind of stuff. I think, you know, just putting the word out there that we need help for different events and that kind of stuff. I think we could split shifts, where maybe not everybody was there at once, to make it so it's not like, you know, everyone's feeling like they're doing the same jobs, and one person's doing, helping all the time, and other people aren't. So maybe have like allocated times that they sign up for, or like, hey, these are the events we have coming up. Could you help with this, this, and this? And then on the next event, you could come and, you know, set up for that. Because I don't know if you would need all 11 every time, or if there is even 11 people to help, but I know from volunteering in the past that a lot of times, it seems like it's always the same people helping. So maybe really talking to people about getting out there, about donating their time, about even, you know, service hours for, like, I know my daughter's in National Honor Society, and she always needs hours for school and stuff, so maybe even like, hey, if you have a kid that could come help, they could get hours, or, you know, volunteering their time. Just some ideas for.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Two-part question. What is your expectation of the time commitment necessary for this position? In addition to planning and attending events, the daily demands of the job, the occasional call-in during a rental, you'll also be expected to attend City Council meetings, Recreation Commission meetings, and DDA meetings. Are you able to make these time commitments?
As far as my expectations of the job, from what I've been told, it right now is a 20-hour position. I felt after that meeting and looking at those things, and just from my experience of running my own business and the time commitment those things take, that is probably a bigger than 20-hour commitment a week. Yes, I can. I luckily have the ability to manage my own schedule, so I can book myself accordingly around that. So yes, I would be able to make anything that I was obligated to make, as far as City Council meetings, special events, that kind of thing. But, like I said, I don't know where everybody stands as far as the hours committed, but right now, I am applying that it is under the assumption that it was a 20-hour a week position.
Can I clarify?
Please.
28 hours is.
28 hours, okay.
Just so you're aware of that. Thank you.
Yes. It looks to me, I mean, I'm not a professional, and I don't have the job, but looking at the responsibilities, I feel it is probably more than that, but that's what.
Thank you. Treasurer Fonti, we're going to go to you for question number 10.
Short question for you. Should you be offered the position? What's your timeframe for starting?
I don't feel, I feel like I could start as soon as, I mean, I'm sure there's some obvious training and stuff, so I'm sure I.
But you're the boss. You don't have to give two weeks' notice, right?
No.
Thank you.
Counselwoman McNabb for question 11. I'll go back to Treasurer Fonti for question 12.
I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask?
Let's do it again.
You hear me?
I, no, I had no idea what anybody was going to ask.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. I didn't.
I know you took the time to prepare for this interview. Is there anything else that you were expecting us to ask you?
No, I think you covered more than I could have ever, I didn't know what to prepare for, so I think you covered a lot of questions that I would have, more than I would have thought. Yes.
Thank you. Treasurer Fonti, back to you, and then I'll take us to question 13.
Okay, very good. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having me.
Last question. As the vacancy has opened the doors for reimagining the Recreation Department, we're taking a look at the rental rates as they exist today, and see if they're compatible. We're going to compare that to our cost-to-revenue between the two buildings, and as you know, we operate two buildings right now. So on one side of the coin, somehow, we're going to make a decision on whether one building is suitable and the other one is not, versus looking at the second building and looking at the, what we'd call the diamond in the rough, to expand events and so on and so forth, to capture the revenue that we think we can get out of that building, if it's managed correctly. Do you see yourself in that position to be able to coordinate event planners, reach out to event planners, and expand that horizon into that second facility to where it's utilized more than it is today?
Yes, absolutely. I feel like I have a very good base of people as well, just from my experience throughout the past 25 years. I, all the time, encounter different people that have needs for things and events and that kind of stuff, and I feel like it's very, I have a lot of resources for, to plan different things for the future, yes.
Last question we ask all of our applicants is, do you have any personal or professional relationships with anybody here in the chambers?
Well, I've had a personal relationship with Dorothy in the past from beautification and the farmer's market, and I know Rob, he's a neighbor of mine, so I mean, I would say a friend, yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Well, we're really grateful for you putting yourself forth as an applicant and for taking the time to be here for the interview. Counsel, any questions or comments, before we turn it over to you for any final comments you'd like to leave with us? Floor is yours to have any closing comments you'd like to share.
I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, and thank you for the, you obviously put a lot of thought into the questions, and I appreciate the mental challenge, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Well, just a few thoughts from my end, before we get to public comment or any other comments or questions for Counsel. Number one, big thanks to Clerk Tomasic, City Administrator Blackburn, Councilman Molnar. The three of them really kind of helped spearhead a lot of the preparation process here. A special thanks to you for all the scheduling and obviously all the notices. So that's number one. Two, I don't want to speak for anybody other than myself, but I think it's a great day for Gibraltar to have the seven applicants. Not only the number, but the quality of the applicants that just came in front of us for this position. I'm very excited about that. I love that there was a lot of positive comments around, you know, former Director Gores and her contributions foundationally, but a lot of forward-looking momentum, I think, that we get to look forward to when it comes to seven qualified candidates we get to choose from. So with that being said, we have a council meeting a week from today. And so I'm not sure if you had any other action or considerations that you want to accomplish tonight, but I suggest that we take our time to digest this information, and that we convene on some sort of action step for progressing this path next Monday. It'll give us also a chance to work on any background information we need to collect, and any other aspects of the, you know, obviously, formal hiring process. So if that sounds good to Counsel, I would suggest we make that an action item on Monday's discussion.
We had that special meeting before the meeting, right?
Correct.
I don't think an hour's enough time. We're supposed to discuss infrastructure?
See, I want to stay in scope today, because that was motioned by you all last time, so we have the hour for the discussions that were motioned. I don't think we can be adjusting that this evening, because the scopes for the interviews. But are you supportive of having this Parks and Recreation Director discussion on our council agenda on Monday? Give us some time to digest.
Yeah, I think so. I think having a week is plenty of time for us to let it absorb what we heard tonight, and ask questions amongst each other, and try to pick a direction and discuss that. And I think it's appropriate to be on our agenda for action item for next Monday, absolutely.
I love it. One of the things I'll leave you with, I know what was effective for us in the past in some of these hiring processes, was for each of us individually to say, proceed with hire, and our prioritization of that versus do not hire. And that way, independently, we have that kind of shortlist mentality for when we get back together to talk about it. So just throwing that out there, it might be a good way for each of us to come prepared to represent where our headspace is for Monday's discussion.
I think we're going to have seven shortlist people, so I think that's, I think to echo what you said at the beginning, we had a great list of applicants today and interviewees, so I don't know how applicable, you know, the, you know, do not hire is in this scenario.
It's good news.
Yeah, so, but I agree, putting some type of delineation as to a preference of candidate, you know, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and so on and so forth, to where we can do that individually and then get together and compare notes, for sure.
Love that. Any other feedback comments, Treasurer Fonti?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I think, Counsel, you've been challenged tonight in a good way, a very good way. So looking forward to see how you shortlist.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. All right, well, we'll put this on as an agenda item. We can work offline and make sure we prepare for packet. But again, thank you to those that helped spearhead this effort this evening. Thanks to the applicants for their time and great representation. And with that, we'd like to open up to public comment. Is there any members of public that would like to address Counsel this evening? All right, that will close public comment, and Counsel will be looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion by McNabb, is your second? Second by Wood. Katie, please call roll.
Wood? Cox?
Yes.
McNabb? Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
It's getting warm now. It's getting cold again. They shut the heat off. They shut the heat off.
He was very.
He's so enthusiastic.
He was enthusiastic. You cannot not have fun.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Talking about Mr. Boyer?
Good night, sir.
Good night.
Good night, sir.
Well, that could be how enthusiastic he is.
I can't echo the statement of one of the last.
What's that?
I said, I can't echo the statement enough that we're truly.